Are we okay? Good. We have seven. We have a quorum, we have seven. Even with one recusing himself at any time, we still have a quorum. Even if two had to recuse themselves, we still have a quorum. Right now it's eight members, so we need eight. Now, once Teddy is sworn in or seated, then we'll have eight. I don't think it's a problem. Okay. Are we all ready? Everybody ready? Okay, it's seven o'clock, and we're gonna get started right on time.
Do you know who you are, no?
I would like to call to order the June 8th, 2023 meeting of the Waukegan Planning and Zoning Commission. Can we have a roll call, please?
Anderson? Bill?
Here.
Griffin?
Here.
Grimes?
Here.
Howe?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Rivera?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Here. We do have a quorum, and I would like to ask if the commissioners have any objection to us moving item 5A up in the order to handle it. Now, this is a modification of the rules and procedures to allow for remote participation of members in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Does anybody have any objections to handling that next? No? All ready, then. Are you gonna make a presentation on that?
Yes, Chair, briefly. The change to the rules of procedure is to add a section allowing remote participation in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act allows remote participation in an open meeting for reasons such as personal illness or disability, employment purposes, or the business of the public body, or a family or other emergency. In this case, the board, this board will be able to, I'm sorry, this commission will be able to exercise these remote rules once they adopt rules that permit them to do so. And so, that's essentially what tees this up. This change to our rules of procedure will allow us to have members participate in this meeting remotely in accordance with the rules of the Open Meetings Act.
Do the commissioners have any questions regarding this? Okay, then I'd like to ask for a motion. Commissioner Grimes, you make a motion to approve the modification of the rules of procedure to allow for remote participation of members in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rivera. Any comments, questions on the motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Haynes?
Approved. I mean, yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, now, we had a request by Commissioner Anderson, who was not able to attend tonight for reasons that are covered by the Open Meetings Act, to participate remotely, and do we have her on the phone?
Okay, I'm gonna put you on the picture.
Commissioner Anderson, this is Michael Rodriguez. You requested participation remotely this evening, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to ask for a motion to allow Commissioner Anderson to participate remotely for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Rivera.
Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Howe. Any comments, questions on that motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
We can do a voice vote.
Voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, do we need to officially? We're gonna have another roll call now.
Haynes? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. Next item, item 2A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 11th, 2023. The last meeting was a meeting primarily for the purpose of Commissioner training, and we did approve minutes, and let's see, what else did we do? I think that was basically it. We need a motion to approve the minutes?
Also moved.
Motion by Commissioner Bill?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any comments, corrections, or changes to the minutes? If not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Haynes?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Howe?
Abstained.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Okay, item 3, audience time. This is an opportunity for anyone here who would like to address the commission on any matter, whether it's on the agenda tonight or not. This is primarily an opportunity for anybody that wants to speak to the commissioners, and typically, we're having, all the items on the agenda are gonna be hearing items. So, as the items are discussed, anybody who wants to comment or ask questions will be allowed to do that at the appropriate time, but right now, we're just allowing for anybody who wants to address the commission for any reason whatever, whatsoever. Okay, moving on to item 4, old business. For A, zoning calendar number 2703, which is a request by a conditional, for a conditional use permit for a park district recreation facility to include a golf driving range, bar, and restaurant at 3391 West Beach Road in the CR Conservation Recreation Agriculture District. Now, this was actually presented in our, at our April meeting, and this was held over because of some issues that existed, some concerns that were voiced by members of the community that live across the way from, on Beach Road, across the way from the park district facility, and we had asked them and the petition of the Park District to try to get together, come to terms, discuss their differences, and see if they could come to some kind of meeting of the minds and come to an agreement on this. So, how shall we handle this now at this point?
Chair, we can just handle this normally have the applicant present their, I guess, application.
We don't need a whole presentation. That's already on the record.
Not the whole, just changes from the last thing, just from the last time.
Okay, yeah, so we don't need a complete presentation. That was already done in April, and that's on the record, and what we, I guess what we're looking for, and I wanted to just get clarification from our legal counsel, is an update on what has transpired since our last meeting, since the April meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself because I involve this project.
Yes, please. Commissioner Howe is recusing himself because he has an interest in this project. So, who will be presenting for the Park District? Just the two, just the two of you? Okay, then what I'd like to do is to swear you in. Is the microphone on? And I don't believe you need to move the microphone, I think we can pick you up along your standing room, if you're close enough. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do, I do.
Okay, please proceed, and even though we know who you are, please give your names and your affiliation to the project, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Michael Jesse, I'm the manager of operations for the Waukegan Park District, and I am with Jerry Alicio with the AT Group, our project manager. In attendance today is Jay Lerner, our executive director, John Beckman, Director of Finance and Operations, Quincy Bechter, Director of Parks, and Shelby McDonald, Director of Marketing and Community Relations. At the conclusion of the previous meeting that you were speaking about, we were tasked with speaking with Beach Park and the residents of Beach Road. The results of those meetings are that we have moved the entry of the facility off of Beach Road, and full access, or excuse me, three-quarter access will be off of Green Bay Road. This is something that we're excited about, since we wanted access off of Green Bay Road in the first place. The Illinois Department of Transportation does not have any objections to this access in concept. Removing access from Beach Road to Green Bay Road will prevent an increased, or decrease traffic burden on Beach Road. We would like to open it up to any questions from the planning and zoning committee. Thank you.
There is one other change that was made to the site plan. If you look at it, you can see along the north side of the parking lot along Beach Road, we've added a berm and substantial tree line, again, to help screen the facility from the residents across Beach Road. So, that's the other change. Those are the only two changes that have come since the presentation that you saw.
Do the commissioners have any questions for the presenters?
Of course, I do.
Commissioner Haynes?
So, I did not have time to drive by the site again today, and I can't remember. You know, you have two drawings in here, one is, says overall site plan, which I believe is what is referred to as Exhibit C in the letter to, from IDOT. Am I correct that, the one that says overall site plan?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Okay. So, that shows, what I'm interpreting as the plan that you've presented to IDOT, which is to actually widen the road to allow for the two left turn lanes?
That's correct.
Or, so there currently are no left turn lanes there right now?
There are no left turn lanes. So, as a part of the work that, to create that access point, we are providing a left turn lane.
Okay. And then, so currently, there is nothing there to address the traffic, and so, can I ask, once you have approval from, or the referral from us to City Council, and City Council theoretically approves it, what is your timetable for actually building this facility, and how long will that take in your estimation?
I wish I had a crystal ball. Dealing with IDOT, we'll have to go through that process and get formal approval. That can take anywhere from six to eight months.
Okay.
And so, in the process, we hope to be developing drawings. As soon as we would get IDOT approval, we would go out for bid, and then start construction. I can envision this happening at least a year.
And you, will the commencement of the construction of the facility begin before you have the road finally approved, or you're going to wait for the final road approval before you do anything?
We really can't do anything on the site until we get that IDOT approval.
Okay, all right. Chairman, is it appropriate to address this letter here from Beach Park, or are we waiting on that?
I will read that into the record. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Griffin?
You really have the same footprint that was there when it was the golf course, right?
The footprint of the building has not changed, nor has the landing area not changed.
None of the parking or?
None of that has changed. No, we are, we're still the same plan.
You're not disturbing anyone on Beach Road, in other words?
No.
We are requiring, we are not having any access off of Beach Road to the facility. All access will be from?
Commissioner Griffin, we need you to speak into your microphone.
All access will be from Green Bay Road.
Only it'll be improved, because you'll have turn access.
Correct. And the only way we can get that access is to improve it to IDOT standards.
Okay.
Any other questions from commissioners? Okay, there is a letter that we received from the village administrator, Mark Huber, that I'd like to read, is from Beach Park. I'd like to read into the record, and then we're gonna allow for audience questions and participation. This is from Mark Huber, dated June 7th, 12:10 PM, written to Noel Kischer-Lepper. Hi Noel, the Waukegan Park District sent an email to the village with revised plans to propose golf facility on the property at the corner of Green Bay Road and Beach Road. In that, they've indicated that they discussed their proposal with IDOT and decided that they would no longer access the site from Beach Road. It is disappointing to hear that they met with IDOT without, the village of Beach Park, as we discussed in our previous meeting, between officials from Beach Park, the Waukegan Park District, and the city of Waukegan. During the meeting, we discussed partnering to find solutions to the access that would benefit everyone, including communities surrounding the park district facility, that includes residents from Beach Park and Wadsworth. We agreed that we would all meet with IDOT while working together to pursue solutions to the traffic problems in the area. To that end, we were not involved in the meeting with IDOT, and the problems in the area persist. With the proposed design change to the site, which will no longer utilize Beach Road, the plan doesn't address the continuing traffic problems on Beach Road, and the revised plan is not adequate in that it doesn't address access to the entire site from Green Bay Road, or other options that relieve traffic issues in the area. Problems that persist on Beach Road include speeding and blocking access to properties in the area due to excessive traffic volumes. There has been at least one instance in the last two months where access was blocked for at least 30 minutes. I'm certain that the cameras installed on the park district property and provide a view of the right-of-way area would confirm excessive traffic. The park district needs to develop a plan for emergency access to both the site and to the adjacent properties. If there were to be an accident at the time of the excessive traffic, emergency response times would be severely impacted, costing valuable minutes that could save a life. Adding the golf facility would exacerbate the existing problems in the area. We have options for alternatives for access that could improve access to the area for the residents and park districts that we've not discussed, as we anticipated would occur when meeting with IDOT. There are other possible solutions that we've conceptualized, but have not had the opportunity to discuss them with the park district and the city of Waukegan. It is premature to consider development of the site. Please have this read into the record of the planned commission hearing for this facility. Now, I would just like to know, since we were under the impression that the Park District and the city of Waukegan and the village of Beach Park were going to be meeting, meeting to discuss the differences with some of the residents, has that taken place, and can you tell me from your point of view what the outcome was, where that stands?
So, my understanding is there were a number of meetings and plans presented back and forth with the village of Beach Park, and also some of the residents, of which a number of alternatives were reviewed and proposed, and none of them seemed satisfactory to Beach Park or the residents. I do want to point out one thing, there was no meeting with IDOT, no in-person meeting with IDOT. We submitted the plans that you saw, that you see tonight, to IDOT to get conceptual approval, and that's the only thing we had at this point from IDOT. But, there were meetings, and again, I can, I don't have the dates, I don't have the times for those things, but there were meetings and were presentations made for alternate plans. We asked for their concept plans, we never received anything. We proposed a number of plans, one of which identified the berm and the tree plantings that you see in this presentation, but there was never any agreement on any other means of access or agreement.
Do the commissioners have any other questions for the presenters?
I guess, I have a comment. This is Teddy Anderson. I'm concerned that this discussion somehow morphed from a conditional use permit for a facility, a golfing facility, near the existing sports park, and I understand how that happened, because there was a proposal to use a very small portion of the access road, which is Beach Road. But this is a Waukegan project, and now, there's a different access off of Green Bay. Why are we still sort of focusing on, in planning and zoning, this issue of what's going on at the sports park, or what's happening on Beach Road? I guess, I think this is a Waukegan planning and zoning question, and I think the Park District, from what I have just heard from the proposal that was in our packet, has addressed the issue, and no longer will this facility add traffic to Beach Road. So, why are we continuing this discussion?
Good point.
We are continuing this discussion, because at the time of our last meeting, the plan was to have the entrance on Beach Road, and since that time, the Park District has agreed to not add any additional traffic by not having that existing entrance as the main entryway to this new project, and has now agreed to have the entrance be entirely on Green Bay Road. So, that's the reason.
It's addressed, I'm sorry, it's addressed the problem that was brought up, and, and to me, the question is, is this something the Waukegan Planning and Zoning Commission would approve for the Waukegan Park District, given the new access? I don't think we should be talking about what's happening on Beach Road. I don't think that's, I mean, this no longer even affects Beach Road.
And I agree, and the whole idea behind this was to see if the Park District would agree to have a different entrance, as far as, that's what I understood, and not exacerbate the conditions that already exist. And we are here as Planning and Zoning Commission to debate this new project, not to debate a project that was approved and developed many years ago. So, that is my understanding.
It's not a referendum on the sports park, or the use of Beach Park for the sports park. If, if none of this conversation would have happened, had the Park District, except that the Park District, I guess, had the entrance of Beach Road, it doesn't have that now. So, as far as, to me, that whole issue is, does not, should not influence our decision.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from commissioners?
Commissioners, all the other issues have been addressed, such as stormwater management, have those things been addressed as well?
Can I interject here?
Please.
What's before this commission is specifically the use, and the change that this use would bring to the area, not past issues, for instance, and stormwater considerations are not before this as well. And so, we, I do encourage you all to take a look at the standards, and then narrow your focus specifically to those seven standards that we have to follow in voting whether or not to approve this.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Okay, I would like to ask, you'll get the chance. I would like to ask at this point if there is anybody else here who would like to address the commission regarding this item. I see two hands. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, everybody that would like to speak with regard to this item, I'd like you to stand right now, I want to swear you all in. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Am I counting correctly? Nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Looks like, I think I'm counting nine. Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Everybody answered in the affirmative? Okay, what I'd like to do is to ask you to come up the podium one by one. As you come up, please give your name and your affiliation to this project, and also, before you leave the podium, please make sure, is there a sign-in sheet on the podium? Do we have one today?
I'll hand them one.
Okay, yeah, please make sure you fill in your name, so that we have it for the record, because sometimes it's kind of hard to reconstruct waxing. And because of the fact, because of the fact that we have so many people that want to address the commission, we're gonna limit your time to, let's say, three minutes, okay? And what I'd like to do too, if there are a number of you here that are, that have the same concern, if you have somebody that would like to serve as the group spokesman, we would allow for that also, and maybe give that person a little more time if he's speaking for a group of individuals. So, sir, is there, are you the spokesman of the group, or are we gonna have everybody speaking individually?
I would prefer to go individually.
Everybody, okay, all right, fine. We're gonna limit the comments to three minutes, and we're gonna need a timekeeper.
I'll take care of that, Mr. Chairman.
You will, okay. We don't usually do that, because usually, we don't have, you know, any large number of people wanting to.
Is there any you could consider more than three minutes? I mean, they got 20 minutes to talk about this, 15 minutes. Can we maybe do 10?
No, we're gonna limit it to three minutes.
Okay.
Okay? All right, please come up to the podium.
Good evening. Dale Pav is my name. I guess my affiliation would be a customer golfer. I think this would be a great addition to the Park District and the city of Waukegan. We have a very limited season for golf in this area, early April to maybe early mid-November at best, and I think this would give everybody a chance to play golf in the winter months. Also, there's a lot of activity at Bonnybrook Golf Course. I live right next to the practice green, which I see a lot of people are starting to bring their children out now. Junior golf is pretty important, and I think that starting them out in a driving range type setting would be a little less intimidating for a, excuse me, eight- or nine-year-old on a big golf course. I just, I just think it would benefit everybody in the community for all seasons.
Thank you, sir.
Somebody can have my.
You got it. My name is Bob Sobel. I own Greentown Tavern here in Waukegan. I own Greentown on the Rocks, down by the Waukegan Marina, and I'm an avid golfer. I've been playing golf for 50-plus years now. I've played all over the country. I've played on many different types of golf courses, many different types of communities, and I can honestly say that I've never seen a golf facility have a negative impact on the community itself. The new golf venues now that are being proposed bring technology and an interactive bias to the game of golf, and are changing the dynamics of golf to the point where they're making it more accessible to the youth of today, and people then aren't as adept at golf. So, they're making it a more enjoyable game. I think, I truly believe that this proposal that the Park District has rests upon their reputation of having a great business plan here, and I think that there's nothing that should stop us from going forward here, and I wish you all the best of luck with this, and I hope it succeeds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sobel.
Sure. Could you do it in the order that you spoke? Thank you. Sorry.
My name is Steve Woodson. I'm also a customer of Bonnybrook. I'm a longtime Waukegan resident. I've been playing at Bonnybrook since the early, late 1980s. I've had a standard tee time since early 1990. And I have seen a lot of changes in the amount of play at Bonnybrook. When we first started playing in 1991 on a Sunday, we had 64-somes enter the lottery to try and get a tee time. Those tee times started at 5:30 in the morning and went all the way to after 11:15 on Sunday morning. Now we don't even have tee times. There are that, there are that few golfers because of the demographics of Waukegan have changed so much. And I think in a facility like this, it's going to do nothing but attract multicultural people to try and get them started and to play in the game of golf. And it can do nothing but help Bonnybrook and the city of Waukegan and then this facility. As the previous speaker said, and I've been to a lot of these places that serve food, that have higher technology, it's a fun time, it's a fun family time. It's places that parents can bring their kids and start them out golf at a very early age and then continue that. And that's what Waukegan needs, that's what Bonnybrook needs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Justine Deconing. I do not live in Beach Park, I do not live on Beach Road, but I do, I am a neighbor of the park up here. I understand that we're looking at just this new piece that's plopped down at the end of the road and that you are not considering any of the existing problems with the park. I lived in my house since 1984. My house was built in 1909. Never had a sub-pump, never needed a sub-pump. Maybe the year that the gurney flood flooded the entire village, we had some water in my basement. Since this park has been put on the map, I have had to put two sub-pumps in my house. I do have pictures here of winter and spring, what my yard looks like. I cannot mow the lawn and part of my yard, well, I could now because there's been a drought. I've been able to cut it last week and it was about a foot tall. And I really kind of am concerned when you say there are no, the stormwater management is not part of this project because since the golf course was there, we never had any problems when it was a golf course. But once it became the park with the baseball and whatever else they have out there, soccer, I've had a major problem with water around my property. And I just want to make sure, I have nothing against golfing or against a project like this. I just want to make sure that it's done right and that they don't flood us completely out. Last spring, or this last spring, our neighbors could not get out of their driver with their car, only with their pickup truck because when they had a heavy rain, the water was so deep on Town Line Road that they couldn't get their grandkids to their school because the water was so deep. So it is an important thing to consider. And I do have pictures I can show you. In the middle of winter, there's standing water in front of my house with snow. So there's a problem. It wasn't there before. And now I have two sub-pumps in my basement. So there is a lot of concern about what's going to go there. I am not affected by the airport. Most of the rest of the road is. Those houses are going to be gone, so maybe they don't care. But I care because I'm going to stay there and I do have an issue with it. I just want to make sure that it's something that somebody's looking into. I don't know, I can leave these pictures with you.
Thank you very much. Please let us have your name on the sign-in sheet.
Good evening. My name is Victor Romero and I am a resident of Beach Road. And I'd like to give my time to my friend Alan.
Okay, excuse me, you cannot give your time to somebody else. If you want to speak, you have three minutes to speak.
You said that we can name a representative.
And you declined.
Okay, that's fine.
You declined.
Okay.
My name is Alan Hutchison. I live on the north side of the park. You guys remember me from the meeting I was here last time. I came here talking about traffic issues, about noise issues, about light issues, about sound issues. And I wanted to bring 25 more pictures that were taken between the last meeting that I was here and the meeting that I was here this time that shows some of these problems. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of time, so I'm going to go through this really quickly. But I wanted to touch on some of the things that had happened in the meetings that the Park District had with the residents. There were some promises that were made and there were some promises that were not kept. And I want to touch back into the traffic issue and talk about that when you guys say that the traffic issue is not going to be exacerbated by this new plan, that's totally incorrect. You guys have completely negated the fact that the Park District has removed their overflow parking lot that services all of the events, tournaments that are going on there. So they've lost several hundred parking spaces for what's going on. They've also lost the access road. So if they're going to continue to hold the same size events, they're going to have to do it with less parking spaces and with no turnaround. We've also discussed in the meeting how backups on that road are caused by the park collecting money at Beach and Bayonne, which is where the darkened area is right there. And Greg Petrie here, I'm sorry, not Greg Petrie. Jay Lerner himself told us that that was going to be moved inward to the park and it hasn't been. It happened one time and then the park continued to collect the money right at the edge. I want to read a quote. I actually asked, I'm sorry. I actually asked the young man working the gate about why they were not, why they were not collecting the money inside the park. And I'm not going to read exactly what he says because it contains vulgarities, but he said that they don't do that because it doesn't work. And the only reason that they go inside the park is because they only do it when the big guys are watching. So every day since that first day, the park has not made good on the promises that they made with the community, among many other that I'm happy to go through if I was given an ample amount of time. I want to jump over to the portion that I did that was about the integrity of the park. I want to just read this. "Since the meeting in March, the park has promised the board that our community, that they would be transparent, responsive, and work to resolve the issues with our community." They haven't done any of these things. "In fact, their actions since the March meeting have proven that the higher-ups of the Park District either are not telling the truth or they likely have no idea what's going on at the ground-level operations of the sports park." I cite the following examples. The first example is the one I told you about moving the traffic in, and that is where the quote is itself. "Another problem is the use of parking tickets." Jay Lerner himself told us that they were no longer going to be using parking tickets because what happens, and I'll pass those around too, what happens is those end up getting scalped. People who are coming out of the park stop and sell them or trade them off to people and create a further traffic backup, exacerbating the problem that's going on now. And if the end of the day comes and they can't, and don't have anybody to give them to, they end up tossing them in our yard. That's how I got that one. There are several other examples, but I know I'm going to be short on time. So I'm going to skip right to the end. Brings me to my biggest concern. The Park District has completed all the, I'm sorry. The Park, I would like to know if the Park District has completed all the items that were asked of them in the March meeting. I want to know, have you completed the traffic study that estimates how long the traffic congestion takes to safely traverse Beach Road during the peak traffic events? Have you completed a sound study as required by the city of Waukegan? Do you have an approved stormwater management plan? Have you developed a screening landscape plan that meets city requirements and has been approved through the neighboring communities? And do you have an ecological study to understand how and what types of wildlife will be as affected as was requested by this board? I went through and I went to the values of the Park District. And I'm not going to read them all, but I want to read a couple of them. There's only five, so.
Sir, your time is up. I've already given you more than three minutes. I'm going to have to end your time. Thank you. And I'm going to ask the petitioners to respond to the concerns that you raised.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matt Toledo. I'm a resident of Beach Park. I live off of York House and I am an avid golfer. I am in favor of this facility and I just want to add on to everybody who was in favor of this. This facility right here accommodates people with disabilities. I have friends who don't feel comfortable at golf courses around here, being rushed by people behind them. Right here, they can rent out a bay. They can rent a bay out for a certain time without being rushed and feel comfortable here. Also, I have family, two kids. They've been with me one time golfing. I've been a golfer for over five years. And we went to Topgolf in Schaumburg. No one wants to drive to Schaumburg right now with gas prices. This place right here, you can bring your family to too. You can have a family party, kids will like it too. That brings also revenue to our neighbors from Wisconsin, McHenry. They don't want to go to Schaumburg. They're going to come here to Waukegan. And when you think about Waukegan, what do you think about? Hopefully not the negative, maybe the harbor, maybe the new casino. When you say Waukegan, oh, that's where the new golf facility is at. Something positive for the community. When you say gurney, what do you think of? Great America, Gurney Mills. If you said Arlington Heights, you might think of, oh, the Chicago Bears might move there. Waukegan golf facility, new one. And it's important to be first too, because if we don't do it, someone else will. And we're going to say, whoa, wow, look at that. That could have been us over here. This right here is a great idea, like someone said earlier. Golf never hurt nobody. Golf facility like this, you're talking about traffic. Traffic in the morning rush hour, no one's going to be out there in the morning rush hour. I see no problems here. I'm in favor for this. One for disabilities, family time, revenue for the community puts a positive spotlight on Waukegan. I vote yes for this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everyone, no clapping. Let's keep some decorum in here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Holden Moise.
Hello, good people. How are you? Never spoke from here, but that's okay. This is a good idea. This is an entertainment value. My name, Greg Moiseo, 2721 Brookside Avenue, 20-year alderman, city of Waukegan. This is a good idea. This is an entertainment venue. We need it. We need family entertainment in the city of Waukegan. Whether it's golf or not, I mean, I'm a golfer. I don't know that I would go there and, I mean, go there to have a good time, but I'm not going to go there to hone my swing or anything like that. But it's, right now, it's unused land. And I think the Park District has proven that what they do, they do a good job at. They do a really good job of what they do. And we need to think about that. This is a place for people to go. Your son or daughter plays a soccer match at this sports park at 10:00 a.m. and they're done at 11:00 and they don't play again until 3:00, what are they going to do? Right now, there's nothing to do. Sit in their car and look at TikToks? No, they can run over here and have a good time at this facility. It's a perfect example of what needs to be done. There's no Topgolf, Schaumburg's the closest one. This is a replica of Topgolf. The reason there's no Topgolf, it's 15 to 50 million to build a Topgolf. Ain't nobody coming here to build that. I mean, I wish they would, but if the Park District doesn't do that, trust me, there'll be somebody in Kenosha or somewhere in Lake County that will do something like it. So the Park District will miss out on that. I'm sure all the concerns of the people in Park, in Beach Park can be met. The Park District is amazing at what they do. Stormwater, this, that, and the other, it's fine. The state would not have given the Park District the access to Green Bay Road if it was a bad thing. Orchard Hills was up there for years and had access off of Green Bay Road. What's the difference? There's no difference. So to me, it's a good thing. I'm sure we can work with our friends in Beach Park to make this work. But to me, there's no negative in this. For too long up here, I sat up here and we were the city of no. No, no, no. We need to start to be the city of go. The city of go. Not no. Too many times, we look at things and say, no, we can't do it. We can't make it work. We can't make it work. Meanwhile, everybody around us says, let's go, let's go, let's go. I know this is really not a city issue as far as maybe a. But we need to start to be the city of go. Thank you.
Thank you, Holden Moise.
Hi, my name's Christine Hekker and I'm a resident of Wadsworth. Very happy to say I'm not a resident of Waukegan tonight.
Are you talking to the microphone?
Very happy to say I'm not a resident of Waukegan tonight, though I was for most of my life. I think we're losing sight of what we were talking about at the last meeting when this was first brought up. I was at one of the meetings with the three gentlemen sitting here from the Park District. If you want to wave your hands up, I was at the meeting, right? Right by my house? And I sat there and I listened to them tell me, tell me if I'm lying or not. You said, I explained that quite clearly, everyone at this meeting, including Alan that was talking earlier from Beach Park, made it clear that we weren't against this facility. Did I say that at that meeting? That I wasn't against this facility? My husband and I both said that. We said we're against the issues that it's causing because of what we've had from the sports complex and what we were worried about. It was never discussed at that time. You guys all said you couldn't have access both ways to turn right and left, whatever, off of Green Bay Road at that time. And at that time, I was told, one of the problems was you're, they're blocking people on Beach Park, so Beach Park people can't go up and down the road to get to access the sports complex. And they told me, no problem, we can move the ticket sales up further so that people won't be blocking Beach Park, Beach Road, for people to get up and down Beach Road. That hasn't happened. Every weekend, we've taken pictures and they're taking the money in the same spot. So a simple thing that you told me was a simple thing at that meeting apparently isn't a simple thing. So the little things that you're promising that you can't come through with make me concerned about the big things. But at least for me and my husband, we both said, everyone at that meeting said they weren't against the sports complex. To sit here and watch you Park District employees, the snickering and the high fives as I sat in the back of the room, it was disgusting, disgusting. People have the right to say what they feel about this and you guys make an informed decision. But I'm glad I live in Wadsworth and not Waukegan. But you can't sit here and say that, you know, what we said in this meeting, the simple things we asked for, picking up the garbage, these are little things. We're not asking for grand gestures. Just follow through with your promises. I sat there and you gave me a line of crap because nothing's happened. Thank you.
Was there anybody else?
Could I please have 20 seconds more?
He goes 20, I want 20.
20 seconds. As far as I know, the closest facilities, there's one in Kenosha and one in Vernon Hills. It's not, nothing like this is going to be.
Can you speak to the microphone?
Okay, you know what, I'm not supposed to allow this, okay? We already agreed that we're at three minutes.
I apologize. I just want to know that, thumbs up here.
And sir, I gave you more than, I gave you a lot more than three minutes, as you recall.
I just wanted to make a point.
All right, Chair, can I make a clarification?
Please, please do.
There was a statement that the stormwater considerations were not a part of the project. I want to make clear that that is not what I'm saying. Stormwater issues are important. However, the purview of this commission is very specific. It's the use that we're focused on. The conditional use is for recreational facility. Anything else that might be an engineering issue, might be an issue as the applicant goes through getting its permit. However, I want to make sure that this commission is specifically focused on the standards as it pertains to the use of this property that is the subject of this application.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, I'd like to know if the petitioners would like to respond to some of the comments that were made. And I really would like you to address some of the concerns that were raised.
Don't touch the microphone, please.
Don't touch the microphone, please. Specifically adjusted so that it picks things up.
I'm used to grabbing it. So, again, Jerry Ellis here with the AG Group, we're the program managers for the project. A couple of points were raised with regard to, I think, some, some issues with the site in terms of lighting, netting, screening along the south property line, and then also some issues with wildlife. There are conditions that have been put into the conditional use, into the conditional use that address all of these things and I'd like to read them so you have them for the record. Outdoor lights shall follow the dark sky characteristics and minimize glare, light trespass and sky glow. Light bulbs from outside use shall have a rating of a Kelvin or less and lighting on the golf earth must be turned off when not in use. And that's a condition that we have to agree to as part of agreeing to the conditional use. Waukegan will add netting, netted fencing on the south end of the driving range if issues with neighbors to the south rise. Proposed chain link fencing along the south line will be changed to opaque privacy fencing or instead screened with vegetation. And then finally, the Park District will work with the Audubon Society to investigate the risks the netting has towards local and migratory birds. Measures to prevent birds from flying into the sports netting will be employed such as lowering the netting when driving range is not in use, making the netting more visible to birds, or other methods as indicated by the Audubon Society. So again, we have addressed some of those issues that have been brought up in the past meeting. I guess the only other issue here really has to do with issues with the sports park. And as we have heard from the members of the commission and everything else, that's not the purview and not the discussion this evening. I'm sure the Park District would be willing to sit down and try and work those things out again, but it has really no bearing at this point on the use of that property as a golf facility. So we did, so one of the things that's not required, at least it's not a condition in the, in the planning and zoning is to, and you have said to us that you don't require a sound study. We did some analysis of another larger, three times?
Fifty-nine.
Go ahead, why don't you respond to that? So we did some analysis at a, at a, at a local driving, at another driving range that is very similar to this but much larger and I'll let...
And from investigation of it, we took multiple decimal readings at different points. At a golf bay where guests were playing, the reading was 65.3. By the front door of the facility was 62. Twenty-five, 25 yards away, it was 63. 50 yards away, 63. 75 yards away, 58.7. And 100 yards away was 55.7. And these decimal readings are equal to a quiet home are the readings we took at this facility. And it was a 59-bay facility, three stories tall. Ours is 16 bays, two stories tall. They also had live music going on outside, which was creating more of the sound outside than inside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask if any of the commissioners have any questions of the petition now. Mr. Haynes.
At its heart, this project is a great community potential site. The, the, the demographics of it, I, I don't know. I'm sure the Park District has done sufficient work to understand who in this community would be coming to use it besides the golfers at Bonnybrook. So I'm sure that they're confident in their studies that they've done, that there's enough community interest in this to support it. It's a large project. And I do understand what we're all saying about what this commission's task is here and our task is related to how that site is to be used and if it is permissible under the planning and zoning purview to use that site for that. We talked in our last gathering about the subject, about what a great neighbor the Park District is. Many people can attest to that. Many people here today have talked about the Park District. And I myself talk about the Park District, the park that's in my neighborhood. I don't have a soccer field in my neighborhood, a soccer stadium or tournament facility. I don't have the softball there. I don't have a single drive coming into my neighborhood with that. So I can't speak to how I personally would react if I had what these people have in their neighborhood. I don't think any of us here can speak to that because none of us live that on a daily, weekly, monthly, seasonal basis. And all the people who are supportive of this, I would ask them, do they have that in their, in the, on their street? They don't. So I am not necessarily opposed to the facility itself, as many people have stated. The lady from Wadsworth had spoken about how they're not opposed to the facility. But I want to feel that when we say that yes, this is, is or is not appropriate for this space, that the Park District is being good neighbor. And I feel so let down by the Park District because we have people coming here two or three months later saying that the same issues still exist. So I want to know, and I don't know if there's someone here who can tell us this, where do these people go to get their issues addressed? They seem like they are valid, legitimate issues. How do they get those addressed? Who's the, who's the person in charge of that that will take the responsibility? It seems as though, from people who have spoken here, who are residents of Beach Park, and I understand it's not Waukegan, but there, there are people here who have said they were promised things that were not done. Why is that? Who do these people go to? Does anybody here know officially who that person is?
I understand enough, I'm the Park District President. I'll give my number, anybody in here, call me first.
Can I ask a question? Were you at the meetings that these people were at?
Out of that.
Sir, if you're going to make a statement, please step up.
Please come up to the podium.
You need to ask the chairman, not me. I'm not in charge of that.
I'm going to swear you in first. You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed, give your name and your affiliation.
Jeremiah Johnson, Waukegan Park Board President. I was not at any of the prior meetings. I was informed about many of the things that were said, some of which I have been told have been fulfilled. And we can get into that later. We don't, I don't think we need to dredge all that up right now. But I will give my email, phone number for the record. And I, and you can call me, anybody can call me. And I will be, I will take personal responsibility, responsibility for it, so.
Do we think that these issues that these people are raising, we have flooding in someone's yard and street, which is somewhat related to this facility perhaps? Do we have a method...
That's, that's not related to this facility because that's not the golf course, so I don't know about that.
I'm sorry, it's not related to this facility. But we have issues that are theoretically related to the soccer and softball facility.
And, and those aren't to be broached here?
No, I understand that. I'm asking you, are you the person that these people, this woman who has an issue in her home, which she believes is related to that facility, where does she go? Because I'm saying, it's not part of this, I understand that. But I'm trying to find for these people who seem to have legitimate issues, who are the persons they go to?
They might have to go to an engineer, I don't know. This, the sports park was put in far before, I think I was just getting out of college, so I don't know about many, the dredging or, or water issues that have been brought up. If it's one home or two homes, I don't know what to do about that. Maybe we can call Ernie Peterson. I know he's our neighbor as well and he can look at it. I don't know about that, but I'm, I'm happy to help her find a solution.
Okay. So you're the person that the buck stops with?
For the next year, absolutely. And then after that, I'll still take the calls and respond, so, for sure.
Okay.
Please come forward. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your, even though we know who you are, please state your name and affiliation.
Jay Lerner, Waukegan Park District Executive Director. To answer your questions there that you had asked about the neighbors, we did meet with Alan Hutchinson, the Hackers, and I think that, and both the Hackers. So we did sit down and met with them for where we were collecting the parking tickets further into the facility. We did do that. It did not work. It actually caused a bigger cluster. So we went back to the old method of doing that because it didn't work. So yes, we said we were going to do it. We did do it. The staff talked to myself and the department head for recreation. It didn't work, so we had to go back to what we had before. So as far as that goes, you mentioned the trash. Quincy Basters, our parks director of parks, we met with the neighbors about the parks. We, we do clean the south side of Beach Road anyways. We have always done that. We have records to show that. We continue to do that. The north side is private property. We did tell the neighbors if they have trash in their yards that's out of ordinary, we're happy to come over and do it, but it's private property. There's dogs, things like that. You can't enter private property without it being the Park District properties. So south side, we do collect it. North side will help them out. The parking where we tried to do it, as I mentioned, did not work, but we tried it. We're looking at, Ted Haug is an architect. We're looking at a way to expand our entrance into the sports park in the future so we can have two cars, two lines of cars to help with that traffic flow. But that doesn't happen overnight. That takes time to develop the plans, determine the cost, and see when we could do that. But we are looking at ways to improve that with the, the neighbors. You know, it's a tough spot. It's a very popular facility. Back in 2008, the Village of Beach Park gave the Park District 100% access to Beach Road for the sports park. Not, not only did they give, well, in return, we had to improve Beach Road, pave it, reinforce the culvert. We did all those things because they gave us access. So the Village of Beach Park was 100% supportive of this facility. We have 18 fields out there. With 18 fields, you're going to have traffic. It is what they gave us and that's what we've used. So it wasn't like we just started using it and didn't tell them. They were well aware of that. So it, it's a tough thing. I, I try to, you know, we want to do the right thing with the neighbors, but we also have a facility that's very popular for thousands of youth that play out there every weekend. We're continuing to work at ways to do that. It's just one of those things where, when you live, as you said, Mrs. Haynes, there, when you live next to it, you don't like it necessarily. But I think, you know, some of the neighbors moved in after the fact, some were there beforehand. We're continuing to try to find ways to help improve that. But you can't make it like disappear altogether. It's a road that has traffic on it, if that makes sense.
And I understand that and I appreciate the, the information you just provided because some of that has not been discussed here before. I just, I feel we are going to be making a decision on the property itself. I don't want, I don't think that these people who are here and have complaints are going to have this public venue moving forward. And I want to make sure they have a pathway to address their concerns. And maybe Beach Park needs to take a, a, a part in this in terms of cleaning or in terms of whatever, because they did give permission for the road. But I want them as citizens, and they have a right to have their personal property, be their personal property, they need a, a pathway to have things addressed.
No, I understand and they have reached, reached out. Mr. Hutchinson is the most popular of them to reach out. He reaches out regularly with requests. We don't, you know, like different documents, things like that. We always respond to him. Every time he reaches out, he responds and he can tell you that because I know that's, you know, we have regular communication with him. I should add, Dirk, we met with the Village of Beach Park on, I think, three different occasions since our last time, maybe four, and then we met with the neighbors. We did give them a Beach Park and the neighbors both a proposal to do a parallel Beach Road, which would be a new Beach Road, and then the homes on Beach Road would be a cul-de-sac.
You proposed to take our neighborhood?
We just proposed an option. It wasn't, well, it wasn't met with open arms, obviously, so we didn't go that route. That was an option for them to have a cul, a cul-de-sac instead of a road that you back out into traffic and things like that. We did offer something like that and it wasn't a cheap option to do, but it was to try to be a, a good neighbor. It wasn't, it was, we were told no. The Village of Beach Park never gave a compromise like, hey, can, let's work, meet in the middle. Not all compromises meet. You compromise. You can't say it's my way or the highway. We never got any compromise back. It was build, build your own entrance road, build a bridge that goes over, five, six million dollar option, and that wasn't one that was reasonable to accommodate. So that's, you know, we did try that with the village and the Village of Beach Park said, hey, your only option is to use Green Bay Road. That's what we did. The neighbors said they weren't opposed to the new facility. Just don't use Beach Road. That's what we did. So we did make, we did do our best. Is it perfect? Maybe not, but it's, it's what we provided that we felt that was reasonable to move forward with the project.
Chairman Rodriguez, can I say something here?
Yes, give me just a second. Mr. Hudson, you will have a chance to make a rebuttal. So you have a chance to be asked questions, okay? Just, we have to follow the, the procedure, okay? Commissioner Anderson, go ahead.
I'd like to ask our lawyer and our chairman. I don't believe it is the role of planning and zoning to get into mediating or involved in a neighborhood dispute. I mean, if, if we do this, it means every neighbor who has a dispute in Waukegan, and I'm talking about Waukegan, can come to this commission and air whatever it is. And we're going to try to solve that? I don't think that's our role. And I think that's what we're trying to do here. And rather than going with the standards that we are supposed to be evaluating projects on, we're, we're enabling people to air dirty laundry in front of an audience. And I don't believe that's our role. And I feel very strongly that we are on the wrong path. We are setting a very, very dangerous precedent. And, and it's not the Park District. If, are we going to mediate neighborhood disputes or disputes between neighbors? I don't like the, I, I don't, I don't like to drive through a window and the light that's in my backyard. And when, well, we, we'll have, you know, I think I'll want to be paid for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Okay, I'd like to ask if any of the other commissioners have any questions for the petitioners?
I'd just like to say that I've worked with the Park District for 55 years. And if there is an issue, they will respond. Maybe they need a maintenance personnel to help the neighbors. But the facility, had it not been taken for the sports park, would be a large subdivision now. And there would be a lot more traffic than the sport, sports park generates. Absolutely.
Please, one, one speaker at a time, please.
You know, I, I think that if you give them a chance here, they will respond. And maybe if they need to make some changes, like I say, a maintenance person or change some things, I, I think you're going to see it happen.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Veron?
Comment in regards to Waukegan Park District. This is an award-winning organization, one of the best in the country. One of the best in the country. So what they're doing here with this project, you know, let's face it, golf is becoming very diversified, no question about it. I'm Hispanic and I play golf myself and many Hispanics are playing golf now. So it is something that we need in this community. As you can see with our youth now in our community, what's going on in our community? Shootings, robberies, crime, all sorts of things going on. So they need this. They need this type of entertainment. It's a family entertainment, no question about it. And comparing to Top Golf, as Alderman Moiseo was, was discussing, you know, Top Golf, that's, I've, I've been to a Top Golf place and you're talking, you're going to spend 400 or 500 bucks in a night. Now, I don't know how, what, how this is compared to Top Golf, but I don't think it's going to be that, that type of fee to, to, to have this type of family entertainment. But again, you know, this is a Waukegan project. And I'd like to see, of course, I want to see the concerns of the citizens that live around that area being addressed. So as far as I'm concerned, this is a win-win for the city of Waukegan as far as I'm concerned. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any comments or questions? All right, then I would like to allow committee members who wanted to... All right, then, I would like to allow committee members who wanted to have a rebuttal. Will you be the spokesman for the group?
Yes, sir.
Is it agreed?
Yes.
Okay. Nobody objects? Okay, then I'll allow you some time for your rebuttal and questions if you have for the petitioners.
Thank you for the time. I appreciate it. I'm gonna address all of your concerns. Ms. Griffin, you said that if we give the park district a chance to change, they will. I first approached the park district in 2015 and begged them to change. I've been through two executive directors, three boards. I've come to park board meetings. I've been to safety meetings. I've been to village board meetings. There are no changes. They are not interested in changing. They are not interested in helping us. So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that if that's not the perception that you have of them, but that is the truth. Number two, Jay Lerner said that Waukegan was given, the park district was given permission to use the road. That is not true. There is no document. Beach Park asked Waukegan to produce the document that gives them permission to use the road, and they said that they could not. I'm still waiting. I would love to see the docket myself. So, that's a verbalized agreement, much like the verbalized agreement for them to remove the entrance from the road that was agreed upon in 2010. Facts. You asked, I'm sorry, I can't see your name from here, what our outlet is to be able to express concerns to the park district. Earlier this month, at 7:00 a.m. on my way to work, I walked out to my mailbox, and I was nearly run over by a park district maintenance truck and a employee, I assume, 'cause he's in a maintenance truck, by the name of Rafael Dominguez, who was texting on his phone. He could not see me because he was texting. I followed him to get the number off the truck, and that's when I got his name. Ten minutes after that happened, I called, and I went to report the incident and asked to be called back. Sally Sandin, who's the exec, who is the secretary for the board, told me that she transferred that message immediately to Quincy Baster. It's been 29 days since that message was transferred. I've gotten no response and no email back. There is no reciprocation. They're not interested in hearing the problems that they don't wanna be able to deal with or they can't deal with. So, we have a very hard time. Even when we go to the park district board meetings, we're limited to a very small amount of time, just like here, so we're not how we were tonight. So, we're not able to really be able to discuss these issues. If what Jeremiah Johnson is saying is that he truly wants to sit down and talk about this, I'm absolutely open to that, and I wanna reiterate what Christine Hecker said, too. We're not opposed to this facility, but like the neighborhood said from the very beginning, continuing to utilize Beach Road to ram all the traffic into the park is not a solution. The solution is to build a dedicated entrance off Green Bay Road that services both the golf facility as well as the soccer facility. If they would've presented a plan that had that road in there and removed everything, none of us would be here. We wouldn't even be here. We wouldn't even be talking about it. And the last time we were here, in March, Jay Lerner said that solution costs $2.6 million. Today, when he was up here, he said it cost five or six million dollars. I've asked to see the, I've asked to see the estimate for that, and all I got was the bid sheet that came back, not the actual construction cost. I did analysis myself, and the bridge go over, the bridge go over the creek was, came in at just under a half a million dollars. So, if you're gonna put a $17 million, two-story banquet hall bar and driving range in, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask to put the, to put the necessary access in, to remove all of the issues that we're having and be done with this argument.
Okay, before we go much further, I'd like to try to bring you back on track, because all we're here for tonight is for a request for a conditional use permit
Yeah.
For a park district recreational facility to include a golf driving range, bar and restaurant at 3391 West Beach Road in the CR Conservation Recreation Agriculture District. We are not here to discuss the problems related to
I understand. I was just answering the questions.
The prior project.
Sure.
And so, that is completely irrelevant, so I need to bring you back on track. If you have any objections to the item that's on the zoning calendar, please present them.
My objection is that the parcel of land that they're trying to put this new development on is insufficient in size to fit within the sound, light, and traffic solutions that have been represented, and I'm not asking you to cancel it. I'm just asking for a true plan, a true landscaping plan, a true plan to prove that it's possible to put this in. That's what we're asking for. That's it. And to have a bunch of people come up and hearty-ha and say golf is great, I agree, golf is great. I think it's great. I don't dislike soccer or baseball either, but, you know, let's work together. Let's figure out the solution instead of just ramming this down our throats. I'm begging, let's talk about it. Let's come up with a solution. We put a road in, this is over. So, that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to know if the petitioner would like to make a closing statement. Okay. If not, we'd like to ask for the staff position on this.
Good evening, commissioners. As we know, this project was brought before the commission in March. It was brought up that there were some issues concerning the adjacent property and the use on the adjacent property, so it was voted to hold that item over to the April Planning and Zoning Meeting. It was then held over to the June meeting where we are today to allow some time for those meetings to happen between Beach Park as well as some talks or reaching out to I. dot, I should say. Since the March Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, planning staff have attended two virtual meetings between the agencies and another with just the petitioner. During these meetings, the village and the park district were able to discuss some of the concerns that were brought up about the adjacent site as well as the site that we're seeing for this conditional use permit. The village established that the current project or the project as proposed at the March Commission meeting would not be approved by their village board for access off of Beach Road. So, the park district was able to provide some other alternatives, but the village administrator encouraged that the park district would gain all access from Green Bay Road. In addition to the access concerns, the park district was able to address some of the other concerns related to the adjacent parcel, including moving some of the, apologies, some of the parking as well as the trash pickup, curfews, things like that. The park district has decided to move forward with access to the driving range exclusively from Green Bay Road. This will be a three-fourths access, so a right and left ingress and a right-out egress. The Illinois Department of Transportation doesn't have any objections to the access in concept, however, they have not formed a, or have not completed a formal review of this yet. Removing the access from Beach Road will prevent an increased traffic burden on the road. It will not address current traffic conditions, but it will not increase it. This project is now fully in Waukegan proper. This project is specific to this parcel and this use, so this does not include the use of the sports park. This conditional use is purely for this parcel. The park district is a public body, so concerns regarding the other sites, regarding the issues that are brought upon by these sports plaques are encouraged to go to the park district, to their staff, and to their park board. Stormwater management on the site is always a big concern in our area, but storm management is brought, is reviewed on the permit level. So, when plans are fully drawn up, these permits are reviewed by our engineering staff, and they will determine at that time whether any changes need to be made, whether the impervious surface have any effect on the stormwater management on the sites. So, that is something that will come through in the permitting process should this be approved. So, this project, staff recommends a handful of conditions. I have an updated condition that Chairman Rodriguez has. I do apologize, I wasn't able to print out copies for the rest of you. I will point out the adjust, the additional ones as well as cover a couple that I wanted to point out. There is a condition, number four, buildings and parking lots will not extend into the wetland or flood plain. The western side of this property does contain wetlands and floodlands. The project as it stands does not have any buildings, parking lots, or the golf course itself extending into those flood plains. This condition just encourage or establishes that. The existing parking lot along Green Bay Road will be removed and landscaped, meeting the requirements of our true preservation and landscape ordinance, and it must be kept Condition 17, outdoor lighting, not including the range lighting, will follow dark sky characteristics to minimize glare, light trespass, and sky glow. These light bulbs will have to have a rating of 3,000 Kelvin or less, and then the lighting on the golf turf must be turned off when the golfing or the driving range is not in use. Condition 19, the petitioner shall apply for a variance for the height of the golf ball netting. It is above the fencing require, or height requirements that are in the zoning, so they will have to apply for a variance. The proposed chain link fencing along the south flat line, condition 20, shall be changed to an opaque privacy fence or screened with vegetation. Condition 22, this is an additional condition that Chairman has on his paper, the park district will work with the Audubon Society to investigate the risks of the netting towards local and migratory birds. These, there will be measures employed to prevent birds from flying into this, such as lowering the nets when it's not in use, making it more visible, or other such measures as determined. 25, the, condition 25, the Waukegan Park District will rezone their properties to the Conservation Recreation and Agriculture District. There is a list of those properties that need, that are not, that are not currently zoned CR that will be changed to CR. And then 29 is the last condition. That was an additional condition that is, was added, is that the berm on the north end of the property will be extended to fully screen from the residents on the north side of Beach Road. That is all I have.
I'd like to ask the petitioners if they have seen this list of recommended conditions, if you feel that you are able to live up to these conditions. You are in agreement with them?
Chair, can we have them?
Yeah, please step up the microphone, so this can be a matter of record.
Yes, we did receive the conditions before the meeting and will agree, the park district will agree to all the conditions.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for city staff?
Commissioner, Chairman Rodriguez?
Yes.
On item number 22, I have a question. It says, "Any future access from Beach Road will require approval from the Village of Beach Park." I think that probably should say, "Any future access from Beach Road for this project will require approval." I know, I know it's project-based, but I'd like to add those words in that item. Otherwise, it could be misconstrued.
On the updated condition list, condition 23 is the one that
23 is the one
The commissioner is talking about on the updated list. So, condition 23, "Any future access from Beach Road will require approval from the Village of Beach Park." That is just to establish that if they are to ever establish any sort of ingress or egress from Beach Park, that they will have to go through the village to get that approved. And changing the language to specify that this project, that it's for this specific project and parcel and site would be fine. That is implied, though, as this CUP is specifically for this site and this use.
Commissioner Anderson, would you please repeat what you are suggesting?
Yes, I couldn't hear the response, so I don't know if they were speaking to my words or not.
Yes.
But what I said was, on item number 22
It's actually 23.
Which is now 23 on the new
Yeah, on the other one.
Conditions, Teddy.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, I must've missed that.
That's okay, we've got it.
Is this the, I'm looking at
That's the one regarding access to Beach Road.
Yes.
I might've been handed out then because
Yes, on your sheet 22.
I'm sorry.
On your sheet 22, on the new sheet 23. So, it is, go ahead and say the language that you want on 22 on your sheet, which is 23 on what Chairman has.
I see, I see. It's, I just wanted the wording to be, "Any future access from Beach Road for this project will require approval," because we're only talking about access for this project. And given all of the discussions that we've had, this particular item could be misconstrued.
Any of the commissioners want to speak to this?
Pardon?
I think it's fine.
I'm just asking if any of the commissioners wanted to speak to your suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment on that?
Please do.
So, anytime that there is a curb cut onto a property from a public road, the jurisdiction that is responsible for that road has to grant permission for that curb cut. So, whether or not it's a condition, it is a fact that the Village of Beach Park would have to grant permission for another curb cut off of Beach Road
For this project or for any
For this site or any other site that's on a Beach Park road. And Waukegan does the same thing. And Green Bay Road is an I dot road, which is why the park district had to go to I dot to talk about the entrance onto Green Bay Road.
Okay, according to our legal counsel, that doesn't change anything, the wording, if we were to change the wording, it would still be, in effect, the same thing. Is that correct?
Yes, when it's, when it's time to craft whoever makes the motion, if this is a motion to approve and you wanna incorporate Commissioner Anderson's terminology for this project, as Ms. Kishler Lepper stated, it's, regardless of that condition, it is going to be a requirement anyway. However, if it is your preference to include that language, just put it in your motion.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Okay, I just wanna make, clarify a couple of things. First of all, we are not the body that will make the final decision on this, okay? We are simply a recommending body. We have two purposes for this being. The first is to actually conduct a public hearing, a legal public hearing, which allows members of the public to, first of all, hear what is being presented and also to participate and comment and ask questions about any project that comes before us. The second purpose is to make a recommendation for approval to the Community Development Committee of City Council for city council's vote and either approval or denial. So, we are not the body that's gonna make the decision. We're just going to make a recommendation, and I understand that the city council takes the recommendations of our commission seriously, so it is important, even though we don't make the decision ourselves, okay? Secondly, I would like to thank everybody who came out tonight to speak on this, regarding this project, because it's important. It's important that we hear the concerns of the community on the impact of any project. And, you know, the fact that some of you have come out and voiced some concerns at our last meeting, some changes were actually made in what was being presented. So, you did have an effect on the process, and that is important. So, don't feel, you know, if you, if you're not getting all of your concerns answered or all your questions answered, you have had an impact, and you have been heard, and changes have been made based on your concerns and your requests. So, I would like to ask for a motion, and it's gonna be a motion to either recommend approval or recommend denial.
I recommend
Commissioner, Commissioner Bill.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept docket number 2703, the zoning calendar.
Yes, I would like to, this is Commissioner Bill, I would like to make a motion to accept calendar item number 2703 in acceptance of the park district's procedure to go ahead with the planning and implementation of everything that was spoken, pending the conditions
of the city that are met, which we have had an agreement with, and I don't really think it necessary to add the additional language, so I'm not gonna put it in. I think the intent there that Commissioner Anderson brought up.
Okay, Commissioner Bill, your motion is to recommend approval of zoning calendar number 2703, conditional use permit for a park district recreational facility to include a golf driving range, bar and restaurant at 3391 West Beach Road in the CR Conservation Recreation Agriculture District, subject to the conditions as presented to the commission by city staff and agreed upon by the petitioner. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is that your motion?
That is.
And Commissioner Rivera, I believe we should, second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Rivera. Do we have any further comments, questions, or discussion on this motion? If not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Haynes?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. Next step is going to be Community Development Committee meeting Monday, July third, approximately five PM in this chamber. Final time will be set the Friday before. If you have any questions, contact city staff. Thank you very much. Okay, is there any other old business that we need to discuss before we move into new business? No? Okay. Item five, new business. Five B, zoning calendar number twenty-seven twelve, is the appeal of a decision by the zoning administrator to deny the business license application for boutique barber services at twenty-one oh six Hawthorne Lane. Who will be speaking for this request? Anybody who's going to be speaking on this request? Are you the only one, sir?
She will be speaking, as well.
Okay, would you please stand, raise your right hand? I'm going to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, okay. As you speak, please give your name and your affiliation to this project, and make sure that you sign the sheet before you leave the podium.
My name is Luis Andino, and I'm the owner of Andino's Barber Shop. And I'm here to speak on this subject. As you know, I was denied my license based on a ordinance stating that there shall not be gatherings of clients in a residence. I can attest and have further documentation from the city of Zion, my local ward's alderman's son, who's a client of mine, and also a Waukegan police officer, who's a client of mine, that can also attest to the fact that there is no gatherings in the way that I do business. I'm a respected business owner out of Zion. I have all my business licenses dating back to 2015, of which the latest one was 2023 as a home business out of thirty-one twelve Gideon Avenue, of which where I never posed a nuisance. But the way I do business is basically by appointment. It's a one-on-one service, and I don't have many clients anymore. After COVID, I closed my business, and I kept the clients that basically would not go anywhere else. And those are the people that I service now. And as I stated, I service them on a one-by-one basis. They never intermingle. And one thing I wanted to add is, we live in a very beautiful neighborhood. We worked very hard to live there, and I understand why the ordinance is there, and I would in no way want to impose on that ordinance. But I do believe I have evidence here that shows that I would not pose the nuisance that the ordinance is trying to prevent. That's all I have to say. Can I present that evidence?
What is the evidence?
I have a letter from the city of Zion Planning and Zoning, or Economical Develop Coordinator, Sanalito Bronson. I have a letter from Thomas Donnellworth, which is Michael Donnellworth, the alderman in our neighborhood, and a letter from Waukegan Police Officer, Jesus Garcia.
Does anybody care to see that? No?
Oh, I'm sorry. And along with my business licenses going back to 2015.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have any questions? The presenter. You know, I understand what Mr. Andino wants to do, and I respect that. But our problem is that we would set precedents. I mean, this is a zoning, it's residential zoning area, and not a business type of zoning. And if we were to approve this, or recommend to approve, we would be setting precedents on the rest of the city of Waukegan, who would want to do this same type of business?
Commissioner, I'm sorry.
I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel about it, but I'm sorry, I would have to, you know.
There's still a lot more to do.
Well, let's hear the evidence.
Chair, if I may, there are decisions that the commission makes are not precedential, and that's because each property is unique unto itself. What may work on this particular parcel or lot might not work on a different one. And so, certainly consistency is very important, but it's also important to understand that each lot has unique characteristics that may differentiate it from an application that you may have heard before. And so, there is no concept as precedent in the manner in which Commissioner, you mentioned it, just so long as this commission makes decisions that are consistent across the board.
If I may add something, our property does have ample parking. I think we can fit about nine vehicles in our parking lot, of which we would only be using, you know, one spot for the one client that I would be taking at a time. I only, I have a list of about thirty-two clients that I decided to keep. Out of those thirty-two clients, I service about twelve. And they don't come every day. I do have a day job. I only work weekends, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. So it's not like I'm running a whole barber shop out of my basement, you know? I'm just trying to continue doing business legally out of my home, as I did in Zion.
Commissioner Bill?
I have a question. As far as, you have a current license with IDPH and everything like that with barber?
Correct.
And then you would have, your insurance cover the house as a business?
I think...
I think that's required.
I think I can do that. I would have to talk to my, are you pertaining to like my homeowner's insurance, or?
Yeah, yeah, because it becomes something else when you have a business in it. They have to be aware of it anyway.
Yeah, I'm sure I could do that.
I believe also if your house is mortgaged, the mortgage company would have to know about it too, unless you own it outright.
No, we still mortgage it.
So I looked into it a little bit, and I sort of share Chairman Rodriguez's concern about starting a precedence, but if that's not an issue on a one-to-one basis, well, it was, the sign was on your property. I drove by it yesterday, and I noticed you have, what, three vehicles and a van or something there?
Yeah, it's a recreational vehicle.
Okay. And you do have a double-wide driveway and stuff like that, so you would have that. But I don't know, no neighbors have complained, is that correct?
I think there was one opposing vote. I also wanted to add, all my vehicles are registered that are out there. We do own the property, and I think we have the right to have vehicles, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that was just my concerns that there are insurance requirements, and also I think the health department might have to inspect it and stuff like that. There's different things that are in the caveat of having a barbering in the house.
I'm aware of that. Like I said, I used to own a brick-and-mortar. I was in the Butts Building, eleven forty twenty-seventh Street in Zion for over almost eight years. So I am very aware of all the rules and regulations I have to follow as a licensed barber.
Good, thank you, sir.
No problem.
And for the record, I should have mentioned it earlier, Commissioner Haug is back with us. He had recused himself from the previous calendar item, but he's back with us. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
And also, if I may add, the only thing I am arguing here is, you know, the fact that I was denied for that specific ordinance, and that's what I'm trying to prove here. So I don't have any evidence of anything else. That's all I'm really here to argue, is the fact that I won't be having, posing the nuisance that the ordinance was trying to prevent.
Okay.
I mean, Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Haines?
I actually have a question for the zoning department. Should I wait till their time regarding this issue?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay.
Okay, let's wait until city staff make their presentation. You mentioned a letter. There is a letter of objection. I think we only received one letter, is that correct, city staff?
I don't see objection.
I believe so. Okay. This is, it says, "I, Frederick D. and Jill M. Vowles, twenty-one eighteen Hawthorne Lane, object to zoning calendar number twenty-seven twelve," which is this item. Reasons being, one, it's a residential neighborhood; second, we don't want the extra traffic and parking in the street; and three, driveway is already full of cars and van. It's Frederick and Jill Vowles, twenty-one eighteen Hawthorne Lane in Waukegan. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak out, either in opposition to or support of this request? Okay. Okay, I think the lady behind you wants to speak first.
May I present the evidence?
You may.
Hi, my name is Dimitri Rayburn. I am part owner of twenty-one oh six Hawthorne Lane. I did want to vote for overturning that denial. I do work from home, so I know it's not a nuisance. It is a one-on-one patient barber service, and we don't play any loud musics. It is just one client every two hours on the weekend. So I do want to just advise that. So it's not a nuisance. I do work from home every day, and I do need quiet, except for the dogs. So if he does work during the weeks, it's in the evening, and it's only one person at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and your name is?
Dimitri Rayburn.
Did you pick that up, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I'm going to swear you both in.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand, both of you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and as you speak, please give your name and your affiliation to this project.
Okay, Dale Pavlinen. I am neighbors with these guys, and from what they're saying, they do have plenty of parking there. I've lived there almost my whole life, and I travel up and down, past their house multiple times a day, depending on what I'm doing. And I don't believe that parking or a one-on-one basis would be an issue. It certainly isn't with me. So I vote to give, grant them permission to have their business.
And what is your address, sir?
Twenty-one twenty-nine Hawthorne Lane. I live around the corner.
Around the corner, okay.
Yes. Yeah, I stated before that I live right next door to the practice, Putting Green at the golf course, so I know the area very well, and they would not be a nuisance.
Thank you very much.
That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Luis Montes. I live on twenty-one twenty-nine North Bunnybrook Lane, just around the other side of the corner. My only concern is that it's a residential neighborhood, so basically there's houses everywhere. And the other thing is that if you just give them permission or whatever, soon we're going to have different businesses and houses around there. So it's not like, I mean, that's going to open a window for basically everybody that wants to work out of their house. So I mean, that's my only concern.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have any questions?
I do.
Of the objectors? Yes.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing sometimes.
Technical difficulties.
It looks like Mr. Andino is a renter, and given that, if he were to move, but somebody wanted to do a barber shop in that same space, can they do that? Or would they have to seek, they'd have to get a business license, but if we already had approved this as a conditional use, would that automatically be acceptable as a conditional use, as its grandfather?
He said he owns the house.
Oh, he owns it? Well, that's not what, that isn't what's on the letter with, from the Planning and Zoning Department or the Building Department. It says, "Petitioner, Louis Andino, property owner, Dimitri Robert." Is that an issue?
Commissioner, if I may, Sam Green, Assistant Planner, City of Waukegan. Mr. Andino is the property owner, am I correct?
Me and my wife are both.
Yeah, they own the property, and also, a home business license is tied to not only the property, but also the petitioner, so it would not transfer to a new occupant of the home after these current occupants.
Did you hear that, Tina?
I did not.
He said it would not transfer.
It would not transfer over to another person. It's tied to the property address and the name of the applicant.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the clarification.
So how did this come about? You applied to the city of Waukegan for a business license, is that correct? Please come up to the mic, the podium. And that's why you were denied? I mean, you were denied after applying for the license?
That's correct.
Okay. And have you been operating out of the home, operating the business before you applied for the license?
No.
So you haven't really started?
I have a chair in the basement and everything, but I haven't been practicing because I can't do it legally. When I applied, they asked me for pictures of the workspace and everything, so I did have a workspace set up in the basement, but I have not been practicing.
And how long have you lived there?
We moved in February.
Just this year?
Yeah.
And before that, you were cutting hair in Zion?
Yes, out of my home in Zion.
Okay, and you haven't been cutting here all this time?
This whole time, no. I've been traveling to their house, you know? I was told that was okay, so long as I didn't do it in my home.
And who said that?
Planning and, Sam Green.
And before, I mean, before you came to planning and zoning? Before you came to the?
No, to my recollection.
Okay, but you just decided you wanted to do the right thing?
Yes, I've always done the right thing. As I stated, I've been a business owner since 2015. I've always been licensed, and I believe in, you know, these ordinances and stuff. They're there for a place. I mean, they're there for a reason. And yeah, I wanted to do this legally the right way.
Okay, so you didn't do it because somebody told you you had to, or you were coerced to do it, or anything like that? You just did it on your own because you wanted to do things the right way?
Correct, yeah. I know that I need a business license to operate any business, even if it's out of my home, so, yes.
Okay.
And that being said, I had a home-based business in, two home-based businesses in Zion.
What was the other business?
E-commerce.
Oh, okay. Okay, did you understand?
Yes.
Okay.
Perhaps I can provide some clarification on the whole thing. Mr. Andino did apply for a business license in accordance with the city's policies. I was the reviewer of that business license, and I did deny it because of that provision in the code that says, "No routine gathering of customers, patients, et cetera." That denial is how we have historically treated such businesses. We don't have clients coming to the home. Now, in many cases, it's many more clients than ten a week, or whatever, whatever it is, one every couple of hours. But to be consistent with how we've treated those, I did deny it. Mr. Andino immediately followed up and asked what could be done. The appeals procedure to a decision by the zoning administrator is to come before this body. So this is the normal path to appeal a decision that we make, that I make on a business license denial, is to come to you and ask for, and to ask for the appeal to that denial. You have the ability to overturn that denial. Your decision is final, and the appeal to that decision does not go to city council. This approval does not go to city council. It's not a recommendation to city council. It is a decision by this body to override the decision of the zoning administrator, and appeal would go to the court across the street. And Sam's ready to give the staff report, if you're ready to hear from him, the rest of the situation. I just wanted to make it clear.
I just want to ask Noah one question. Or should I wait?
Is it something that might get the staff?
It's very, what she just said.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So you stated that you overturned it based on this no routinely scheduled gathering blah 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 statement, part of the ordinance? blah 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 statement part of the ordinance. I'm just curious as to what the definition of gathering is.
Unfortunately, there is no definition. If there were a detailed definition, it would be an easier decision to make. So we have treated it as cut and dry, knowing that there's an appeals process available, which this applicant has chosen to pursue, and I think it's for you to determine if a limited number of people coming to a home is disruptive to a neighborhood.
Okay.
Are you ready for Sam?
I'm ready for Sam. Okay, I guess we are.
Much of this staff report has already been covered, like I said. That one routine gathering item was the only part of the standards that was the reason for denial. This is a unique case, I would like to reiterate. If this case is overturned, it will not adjust previous approvals of business licenses, nor will it change our interpretation of future home business licenses coming before us, since each property is unique. I should also reiterate that there was one letter of objection submitted to Planning and Zoning Staff for the three reasons stated: residential neighborhood, extra traffic and parking issues, and driveway already full of vehicles. Partially from this, and also out of standard practice, staff has recommended a number of commissions that we believe will address these concerns. On your staff report, number five, business must comply with all aspects of Section 4.3 to, 4.4-3 Home Occupations Ordinance. This part of the zoning ordinance was written to alleviate the impact on surrounding residential areas. There are many, many home occupations currently operating legally in the City of Waukegan under these ordinances. I apologize for the numbering, Snafu, there's two sixes, but the seventh listed condition, customers must park on the property and must not park on the street, should hopefully alleviate any concerns about a parking issue. And the eighth listed on your sheet is number seven, scheduling of clients must be designated to have no more than one customer at the business at a time, and to prevent overlap of appointments. Again, we believe that this condition will reduce the impact on the surrounding residential neighborhood, and like Noel said, this decision is final, so this does not go to City Council pending a judicial review. The commission's decision on whether to appeal, this decision is final. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And that these conditions, I'm sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Anderson, go ahead. Commissioner Anderson, go ahead.
I have a question about the sign ordinance and signage. If I, I don't think I'd be too pleased to have a sign go up in my, in my neighbor's home. I'm not sure what the sign ordinance is for signage and home occupations, but do we have to allow a sign?
So there are existing rules about signs for home occupations in the City of Waukegan zoning ordinance. They are different than businesses operating in business districts, and every home business is subject to the same allowance under that ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you tell us what the details of that are? I mean, is it a sign in the window? Do they have to have a sign in the yard? Is it 10 by 10? Is it, I mean, in terms of how intrusive it could potentially be for the neighborhood?
Sure. Noel can pull that information up for you specifically. I apologize for not having it off the top of my head, although, like I said, it's the same as every other home business, so if you pass another home business and are noticing the signs, that's similar to what could be done at this property.
So while she's looking for that, you know, the world is changing, especially since the pandemic. There are a lot more people working from home now than ever before, and there are a lot of home businesses. And from what I'm hearing, the type of business, the amount of business that Mr. Adino would be running would not pose any kind of an immediate disruption of the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood. But let's just say, for example, that we recommend overturning this denial, and Mr. Adino's business really gets going, and he puts up a barber pole, and starts having patients or customers lined up outside his facility, what kind of recourse would the city have?
Sure. So conditions of this appeal are the first line of defense the city has against a bad actor, as an example. For an explosion of business, as you say, there is a staff imposed limit of 10 appointments per week. Again, that's up to the commission's determination what that number should be, but any adjustment of that number, an increase of that capacity, needs to go in front of the Development Review Board. So we could theoretically revoke this license if that is broken. A barber pole, for example, it seems now that I have the sign ordinance in front of me would not comply, and the city could request that to be taken down. To read for the commission's consideration, the sign ordinance for Waukegan home businesses, I'm on page 54 of the Waukegan zoning ordinance, says, "No sign shall advertise the presence or conduct of the home occupation, to except for a nameplate sign as specified in Section 8.2.1 of the Waukegan Sign Ordinance. No home occupation shall be in any manner visible or apparent from any public or private street." So if you're driving along and you see a sign that says, "My home business, home baked pies," glaring out in the street in fluorescent lights, you know that's not a conforming sign, and you can bring that before us. That would be the same for this business. There would be no sign indicating the operation of a home business visible from any public right-of-way.
Okay, and I'd like to ask the petitioners, and please step up to the podium to answer. The, have you seen the conditions that the city is recommending if we were to vote for overturning the denial? Have you seen the conditions?
I have not, but one thing I do want to add is, and make very clear, is I've done business out of the brick and mortar for almost, you know, eight, nine years. I'm at the end of my barbering career, and the clients that I have are basically people that will not go to anybody else. I do have a nine-to-five job, which I'm focusing on, it's a career with TSA, and I'm trying to focus on that. The only reason I'm trying to do this is because I want to be able to service those clients legally. I don't want to be breaking any ordinances or any laws, and that's the sole purpose of this. I don't, I'm not looking to grow the business, or put up any signs, or even make any new clients. I'm just trying to service the clients that I have now, and that's it. But pertaining to your question, I have not seen the rules that are set forth.
Chairman? Yes, please.
Mr. Adino, one of the conditions that's listed as a possibility to institute if we were to overturn this is to not exceed a capacity of 10 appointments per week. Is that sufficient, in your mind, for servicing your clients?
Um.
That would be five days a week, two days, or two, if we did two a day, 14. What would be a number that would be considered workable for you?
From my, you know, study of my schedule, I don't do more than 12 clients a week, so I would say 12 would be a sufficient number.
Okay.
But that's not something I think I would be exceeding or even getting to anytime soon.
Regularly?
Yeah.
Okay. And may I make a comment to Chairman?
Yes, please.
I get my hair cut. It's someone who cuts hair out of their home, and she's been doing it for, you know, 30-some years. It's in Gurnee, it's not in Waukegan, and she has a barber chair in her house, a sink in her house. You come in through the back door, her back door, you park on the street, and when I'm there, I rarely see another person. So, and hers is a full-time business for her. She does not have another job. That's her job. So I just want to attest to the fact that home-based haircutting is not a business that's going to bring in throngs of cars and crowds of people, from my personal experience.
Okay, I would like to read the items, since you haven't seen them. I want to make sure that you're aware of them. It says, "Options/Alternatives. If the Planning and Zoning Commission wishes to grant this appeal, staff recommends the following conditions at a minimum are imposed. Additional conditions may be required by the Planning and Zoning Commission. One, the petitioner shall continuously maintain an annual City of Waukegan business license and shall seek separate home business licenses for any other home occupations. Two, operation of the proposed use must be in compliance with all other local, state, and federal laws that apply to such uses. Three, the petitioner must obtain a sign permit for any new signage associated with their establishment and shall comply with the sign ordinance and zoning ordinance regulations for signage for home occupations. Four, all building code and life safety requirements of the building will have to be met to the satisfaction of the building and fire departments. Five, business must comply with all aspects of Section 4.4-3 Home Occupations Ordinance. Six, customers must use the main entrance of the house to access the property. No secondary entrance shall be provided solely for the purpose of the business. Six, customers must park on the property and must not park on the street. Seven, scheduling of clients must be designed to have no more than one customer to business at a time and to prevent overlap of appointments. Eight, business must not exceed a capacity of 10 appointments per week, and we can change that to 12 if the commission recommends. This limit may be raised by decision of the Development Review Board. Records of appointments are to be kept in the form of a log, designated calendar, or other database. Denial by the Planning and Zoning Commission would result in the sustained denial of the home business license, and the petitioner would not be allowed to conduct the subject business at the property. Do you feel that you can live with those conditions?
Yes. I think number, the one that says that I must obtain a sign permit, once again, I don't plan on putting.
You're not planning on having a sign?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, do any of the commissioners have any other questions or comments?
Before that, sorry to interrupt. Staff would just like to add two things. Staff agrees with any recommendation on appropriate number of appointments per week. Whatever the commission deems is the appropriate number to have in the condition, staff agrees with. All conditions are written to limit or negate any impact on the neighborhood. Also, should any issues arise, code enforcement is a tool available. The commissioners can make it a note to Planning and Zoning Team if they see any issues, as well as a yearly review of business licenses. Any number in excess of the commission's amendment to the appointments per week after today would be what goes in front of the Development Review Board, so you are free to raise that limit as you see fit.
Okay, and number four, all building code and life safety requirements of the building will have to be met to the satisfaction of the building and fire department. Does that mean that they will be inspected when they get the license or before they get it? And will they have, will they be subject to annual inspections?
I don't believe that there's a business license inspection for home businesses, but I would have to defer to the building commissioner on that. However, if there were a code complaint, then there would obviously be follow-up related to that.
Okay. Commissioners, have any other comments or questions of city staff?
Sam, excuse me. Sam, I have a question as far as the item number four with meeting life safety requirements. Would that mean that he would have to have exit lights, emergency lights in his basement to get the address?
I don't believe so. I'm not a fire official, so I can't say for certain, but I don't believe it would. That would mostly mean things about the house needing to meet codes. Like Noel said, if a code enforcement officer notices something awry about the house that would need to be fixed and addressed, something like a code compliance issue being open could get in the way of this approval being renewed, but I don't believe there's any inspection prior to granting a business license that would occur.
Go ahead.
So I would add, if you, if you approve this, then I will approve the business license, and every business license that I approve leaves my desk and goes to the Building Department, and then goes to Fire Prevention Department. So they will review it. If they feel a need to go out and do an inspection, then they'll schedule an inspection.
Thank you. Any other questions or suggestions?
One more question. The first, number six on the, on the conditions, customers must use the main entrance of the house to access this property. No secondary entrance shall be provided solely for the purpose of the business. For instance, at my hairstylist, I go in their back door, not their front door. Does this prohibit someone from doing that, them having them come in their back door instead of their front door, kind of thing? Or you're just saying that they can't put in a new entrance that's business-related?
So it, it does mean the former. They cannot have a secondary entrance solely for the purpose of the business, and that is a rule in the zoning ordinance regarding home occupations that has been applied to every other home occupation application.
Okay, that's not completely clear, because you say they cannot have an entrance, another entrance solely for the purpose of the business, but what if they have another entrance, their normal back entrance, but they, they ask their clients to come in through that entrance?
So the exact language from the zoning ordinance is, "No separate entrance shall be provided in connection with the conduct of any home occupation." So what we interpret this to mean is, there should not be an alternate exit or entrance to the home provided only to access the business that the homeowner doesn't use for access to the home for living.
Okay, most people I know use a side or back entrance to get into their home, so would that mean that you would want to change, let's see, where is it? Let's use the main entrance of the house to access the property. You say main entrance, you're talking about the front entrance, is that specific? Is that necessary?
I would interpret main entrance to be a primary entrance used, not necessarily a front door.
Not necessarily a front, okay.
There in the door.
Okay.
Can we just take out the first sentence and say, "No secondary entrance shall be provided solely for the purpose of the business," and not have that first sentence? Do you think that that sufficiently covers the?
I actually think that the item that says that they have to comply with the home business regulations already covers it.
Okay.
It was just to call it out.
So we could potentially remove that condition because it's already covered?
You could, sure.
Okay. Because it is a bit confusing.
Talking about removing entire item six?
The first number six.
Yes, my apologies again for the misnumbering.
Okay, so you're talking about removing it entirely?
Yes.
Eliminating it, the one about the entrance?
Yes. Because Noel said that it is covered under the home occupations ordinance.
So now we only have two, one number six. All right. Anything else? All right, then what we are looking for is a motion, how would we word this now?
Chair, I'll help you. Approval of calendar number 2712, removing item number six for a conditional use permit and increasing the number of customers to 12.
Okay, you're, you're going to make a motion to recommend denial?
Oh, deny, yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Okay, I'm going to let you.
Bring in the appeal.
Correct. So you have final approval here, so there's no recommendation, as you were saying.
There's not a recommendation.
So you could phrase it, if you wished, to either affirm or deny the determination of the zoning administrator. And as you noted, the conditions, you can strike that first number six and increase number eight from 10 to 12.
Right.
And so it's a.
I'm smiling because this is the first time we've had power to do something.
I know.
I'm a 12 years old commissioner.
I'm just confused about, am I approving the appeal or denying the appeal? I'm approving the appeal, correct, and denying the denial.
Well, you're, so there's a determination, there's a determination made by the zoning administrator, and that determination was to deny the, the business license. If you affirm that decision, you're essentially saying no to the business license.
No, I am not affirming it. I am, I am overturning the denial.
That's a good way to put it, too. So it would be a motion to overturn the determination of this denial.
Number six and change number eight from 10 to 12.
Yes.
That is your motion?
That is my motion. I'll stand by it.
Stand by it.
What are you doing, Ted?
He'll tell you later.
So just, just to be clear, it's a motion to overturn the zoning administrator's determination with the condition, the first number six being stricken, and condition number eight, that the business must not exceed a capacity of 10 appointments eight, that the business must not exceed a capacity of ten appointments, that's being increased to twelve. That is the motion.
Motion to overturn the denial.
You're granting the appeal?
I second it.
Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to overturn the denial, subject to the removal of the first name, number six from the, uh...
Conditions.
Conditions, and changing number eight from twelve, ten to twelve appointments per week. Okay, and we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Haynes?
Yes.
Grimes? Griffin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Rivera?
Now that I've heard all the evidence, I vote yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries, congratulations. Make sure you memorize these eight items. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. We're not even halfway done, folks. Okay, um... Item twenty C, it's twenty-seven thirteen, stands by itself, right? Yes, okay. Items, uh, five C, zoning calendar number twenty-seven thirteen, is a site plan review for a proposed additional lane at the existing drive-through restaurant at eight fifty South Waukegan Road. Who is going to be presenting? Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please state your name and your affiliation to this request.
Uh, my name is Chris Searls. I'm one of the owners of the Culvers Restaurant there. Um, basically, all we're looking to do, we're looking at a second drive-through lane, very common at all the, you know, fast food locations. Um, over the last few years, our drive-through business has just continued to increase and increase. Um, just to give you some perspective, uh, the Culvers system average is about, for year-to-date, is fifty-five point eight percent of the cars come through drive-through, or the orders come through drive-through. Uh, for the Waukegan location specifically, it's actually sixty-six, sixty-six percent of our orders come through the drive-through. Um, so it's a very popular drive-through location, uh, so we just want to add a second order per out there to help with the congestion and move everybody along.
Okay, short and sweet.
Yep.
Commissioners have any questions of the protester, the petitioner?
That's amazing, huh?
Yeah, okay, that's quick. Um, is there anybody else here who would like to speak out either in support of or opposition to this request? No? Can we have the city report, please?
Me again, hello. Uh, as was stated, this is the existing restaurant in Fountain Square. Uh, they have an existing conditional use permit that was approved in two thousand nineteen. Uh, this recommendation would be to amend their existing conditional use to allow a second lane on the property, obviously subject to building and fire review.
Commissioners have any questions of city staff?
I do, I do. So in, in previous situations where there was a restaurant involved, there was requirements for a certain number of parking spaces for the number of seats within the restaurant, and I know that we're getting rid of an entire lane of parking here, do we still meet that criteria?
They do.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion. Motion to either recommend approval or recommend denial of zoning calendar number twenty-seven thirteen.
So moved.
Recommend approval or deny?
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval. Motion by Commissioner Griffin to recommend approval of zoning calendar twenty-seven thirteen, site plan review for proposed additional lane at the existing drive-through restaurant at eight fifty South Waukegan Road. We have a second by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Haynes?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, good luck with your project. Next step... Next step is Community Development Committee, Monday, Ju... Mr. Searls? First of all, congratulations. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
And the next step is Community Development Committee, Monday, July third, approximately five P.M. in this chamber. The final time will be set the Friday before, so you might want to check with city staff.
Awesome.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move on, we have two more items which may, uh, I don't know, they could go quickly or they could take some time. I'd like to ask for a five-minute recess. If nobody objects, bathroom break. It is nine fifteen according to that clock, let's get back at nine twenty, please. We have an hour recess, please, no discussion, um, during this time.
Commissioners Anderson, are you still with us?
Yeah.
Kenny?
Okay, good. We're still missing one person who's getting ready to walk in the door right now, but we do have a forum.
We do not have a record keeper at all.
We do not have a record keeper. Oh, we do not. You're right.
Oh, yeah, she has a record.
That's...
She needs a break.
I wouldn't say she's the most important. She's pretty up to the top.
We can wait for Christine while I'm off to the rest of the school.
No, no, we will wait.
I got even more faith. I thought it was gonna get worse some day for him, and now he's got more.
I'm not sure I agree at this point, but, uh... But, hey, I mean, I'm... The most important person has just entered the room. Okay. Okay, it's 9:23. Um, we are back in session. Um, we are moving on to items... There are two items in the next project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Zoning calendar number D... It's D and E. Zoning calendar 2714, a variance for offense sports net height at 3106 Belvedere Road, and zoning calendar number 2715, an amendment to existing conditional use permit for a private educational institution to add a sports facility at 3106 Belvedere Road. That's St. Martin de Porce facility, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
And, um... What we're going to do, we're gonna ask you to make the presentation. You'll be presenting on both items as one project, but we'll be voting on them separately. Okay, so what I'd like to do... You're both gonna be speaking on this?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I'd like to swear you in. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state your names and your affiliation to the project.
My name is Preston Kendall. I'm the president of Cristo Rey St. Martin College Prep.
And I'm James Stevenson, known as Sandy, and I'm the owner's representative, working for Cristo Rey St. Martin.
Thank you.
I provided some handouts for all of you, and I'm gonna first refer to this... This first deck here with the pictures of our... A couple of our students, our graduates, on the front of it. I just wanna give some background in case people don't know us. We are a college prep high school exclusively for low-income students. There's some demographic information in there that, you know, I'll only breeze over, but our families, we have 400 students. Our average family income is $37,000, and our average family size is 4.7 people, so it gives you an idea. But we really reserve our program exclusively for young people that don't have a lot of economic means because your family income, unfortunately, in the country, determines often the quality of education you get access to and how far you go in your education. So that's been our mission. We opened here in Waukegan in 2004. Our first two years were at Genesee and Washington in the... We borrowed some classrooms from the College of Lake County. We outgrew that very quickly. We moved south of Belvedere Road, just south of downtown on Martin Luther King, in a rented space from the Archdiocese of Chicago, the old... It had already closed, but the old St. Joseph's Parish. We outgrew that, and if you... I don't know if people recall, but the Waukegan Kmart was closed for a number of years. We found the owner. We were able to purchase that. We were able to get a conditional use permit to operate that commercial property, to operate a school in that area. We... So we renovated that in two large phases. It's really a beautiful campus if you ever wanna come by. It has a large parking lot in front that's the Kmart parking lot. But then we acquired... So we moved there five years ago. In those five years, we then acquired the Bell Lane Motel. We acquired that piece of property because it lines up... It's in the middle of our parking lot, and it lines up with Birch Avenue across the way with the hope of trying to get a traffic signal into our property primarily for the safety of our students. But then we acquired the Slumberland Motel, and that was just recently. And we acquired that in order to create a soccer field. Given the property we already had, coupled with... The property we already had wasn't sufficient, but coupled with the Slumberland property, the back half of it, we can build a soccer field, and that's really what we're talking about. But I'm bringing up all the other properties just to say, you know, we're here to stay. We've really kind of eliminated a couple of... If you knew the Bell Lane and the Slumberland, you knew, you know, there've been murders there. There've been drug trafficking. There's been complaints about prostitution and things like that, and now they're finally gone. And they were right on Belvedere Road for everybody to see. So we're really happy that we're doing this. We feel like it's not only good for our school, but a contribution to the community. So we're building a soccer field, and if you turn just the last two pages, it gives you an idea of the layout of what we're proposing. So you can see that white-roofed building is the old Kmart building, now our school building. And just to the east of it is the synthetic turf field that we wanna put up. You can see that to the north of us is a... That... What do you call it? Landfill? It was... A couple of years ago, it was the same level we are, but now it's about 35, 40 feet high. But that's to the north of us, a big barrier up there. To the east of us is a wide swath of the ComEd power lines, the high-tension lines. To the east of those are two used car lots. They're businesses, and they're the back end of those businesses that front onto Green Bay Road. And then to the south of us, there's a retail strip mall there, and we'd be... We're behind that strip mall. If you look at where any residential properties are, the closest residential properties are probably to the west on the other side of our campus, but all the way over to Ruth Wilcox and across that into Park City. Or if you went south, you'd have to cross Belvedere Road and get behind the businesses that front on Belvedere Road south of us before you hit any residences. So it's a very contained area, very... You know, there's not a lot of things going on other than some of those surrounding businesses. So that's what we're asking for. It will have a turf field. We wanna have it lit by having turf and lights. That allows us to start a little earlier in the spring and be able to play when there isn't a lot of sunlight, and it allows... That's for the girls, and then for the boys, it allows us to play later into the fall when things get cold and dark. So it would have lights. It would be synthetic turf, and it would have a small set of bleachers, and we're hoping that it will have a small bathroom building with a room for concessions, but nothing really prepared on site, more just canned pop or water and snacks. So that's what we're planning, and you can see in the... Was it the very last page? I think, yeah. So the very last page shows you the layout of the field, and what we hope that concession stand will also incorporate some kind of a gate to welcome people in so they know where the entrance is, and, uh... That's it, I think. Anything to add to that?
Just where we're asking for the variance, the second.
Yeah, so the second variance is behind each goal, you know, that's where you get some of the hardest kicks and some of the higher kicks that might get kicked out of the field. And we're asking for a variance to be able to put up netting. How wide is it? About 90 feet wide by 100 feet high on each end. 25 feet high, I'm sorry. 90 feet wide, 25 feet high. Sorry about that. And it's really just to keep the balls from going too far astray. And, you know, if you look around, everything around us is higher than that, so... But that's what we're looking for.
Okay. Commissioners have any questions for the commissioners?
I'd like to say something. Mr. Preston, I believe that everything that you have accomplished there at Cristo Rey, you have done... You should be proud of yourself.
Thank you.
That school is tremendous. I personally know some graduates that have graduated from this fine institution. One young lady, her name is Jessica Fregosi, who went to the... Also, she was part of the Caddy Academy that we have
Yep.
as far as the Western Golf. You should be familiar with that.
Yep.
Well, she also went through that program and also became an Evans Scholar. But she graduated from this Cristo Rey, and now she's doing very well at the University of Washington. So I'm very familiar of what you have brought into this community.
Thank you.
So I would like to, you know, thank you for that as well.
They're great young people. They just need an opportunity and...
Absolutely, absolutely.
I will add, here's just a statistic for you. We have this corporate work study program that the students work as part of their experience with us. And of all of our college graduates, over 40% are back in the area working for one of those companies that we partner with full-time. So we're a tremendous pipeline for young talent in the greater Waukegan community.
Absolutely. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And I once did a commercial when I was alderman for the city of Waukegan when you guys were moving into the facility.
Yep.
We did some kind of a promotional commercial with, you know, for the school, so...
Right, well, thank you for that, yeah.
Anything else? You have any comments, questions from commissioners? I'd just like to ask, um, who would these changes impact? Is there... Do you foresee any negative impact from...
No, really, it's really, we see it as a continuation of what we've already been doing. You know, through COVID, we hosted a number of vaccine... We use our facility not just for our students, but for the greater community, and we use that for vaccine clinics when vaccines were hard to find. We did it for veterans from Level and their families. We did it for first responders. I think many of the Waukegan first responders got their first vaccine at our location. We also have been doing food distribution in our parking lot with the Northern Illinois Food Bank. We opened it up. We're having the Waukegan Symphony is going to perform in our cafeteria this Saturday for the community. So we see this as a continuation of that. If we can get the field, not only will it be a benefit to our students, but we're looking at... We're talking to other organizations in the community, Heart of the City, the Boys and Girls Club, other schools that would wanna come in and use this field when it's not in use.
I guess what I'm saying is, the net
Oh, yeah.
that'd be raised.
Yep.
The lights, I mean, would... Is there any... Are there any neighbors that would be negatively impacted by any of that?
No, and there are some conditions that we agree to on some of those. So there's been 27 conditions, and we really only have concern about six of them. But, yeah, there's nobody to bother.
That's what I'm asking.
You know, the... Yeah, the used car lots, they have their lights on. I don't know if it's 24 hours, but they have lights on at night, and I don't know how this would necessarily impact them. It'd probably help the lighting for them if we kept them on. And there's really... It's behind the mall, so it's not like Belvedere is gonna get any stray light or anything. It's really... It's pretty isolated.
I know the area.
Yeah.
Anybody else either?
And that burn should create a sort of a sound barrier too as well.
Yes.
Now that it's, what, 40 feet high?
Tired of the school.
Yeah.
We were... Yeah, we're thinking about starting a ski team.
Hey, there you go. Okay, is there anybody else here who would like to speak out either in support of or opposition to this request? Okay, I'd like to ask city staff for their report. And before you, I'd like to just thank Alderman Florian for being here with us. You're our one consistent audience member. I appreciate you being here.
Good evening, commissioners. So Planning and Zoning Department has received a variance application as well as a application to amend an existing CUP, conditional use permit, from Cristo Rey St. Martin Prep. The variance application is for a fence, that sports netting that we talked about. That sports netting will be 25 feet high. The maximum fence height allowed by the zoning ordinance is eight feet, so that is why there is a variance required. The purpose of that net is to prevent any sports balls from rolling, bouncing towards Belvedere Road or any of the neighboring properties. Yes. The conditional use permit, or the amendment to the conditional use permit, is an amendment to add three additional parcels to Cristo Rey's conditional use permit of the private educational institution in the B3 district. That... Those three parcels will add about 200... Or a little over 200,000 square feet to their CUP. And it will also provide a new use, or an additional use, of a sports facility with a walking path, bleachers, concessions building, restrooms, things like that. The staff proposed some conditions. We met with the Cristo Rey staff earlier in the week to kind of discuss some of these conditions and make some changes, so you do have an updated conditions list before you with some of those changes. And I know Cristo Rey has a few additional requests as well. So I'm gonna go through a couple of the conditions on here that the city staff identified and kind of mention some of the additional ones that are updated from your original list that you had. So the first one I wanna talk about is condition eight. That is the condition that the concessions building shall not sell or serve alcoholic beverages during sporting events. The service of alcoholic beverages shall be in compliance with all local, state, and federal laws that apply to such service. Service of alcoholic beverages shall require a liquor event license, and any server shall be VACIT-trained. Caterers must have a valid liquor license with the city. This is in connection with our liquor code and making sure that any service of alcohol is in compliance. Condition 13, trees removed during the construction process will be replaced in accordance with city ordinances, including permits and replacement requirements. This kind of flows into condition 14. The landscaping shall be increased to screen the field from neighbors, so those trees that are being replaced can be used towards the additional screening. All landscaping must be well-maintained. Condition 15, we have some conditions about the lighting. So condition 15 and 16 requiring the lighting to follow dark sky characteristics. And condition 16, that all field lighting must be turned off no later than 30 minutes after the end of any nighttime event held at the stadium. Lights shall not be kept on overnight. Condition 17, the nighttime events not directly related to school sanctioned events will be permitted at the facility during evening hours. This includes, but is not limited to concerts, festivals, circuses, carnivals typically held by third-party vendors. All necessary permits shall be obtained for any event. Language was changed from the previous copy that you had to remove the word "sports", so school-sports, sanctioned sports events, we change it to just school sanctioned events. Condition 18, additional trash and recycling receptibles shall be provided throughout. Condition 21 is an additional change. We just modified the wording to... That any measures to prevent birds from flying into the sports netting will be employed, such as lowering the netting when the driving range is not in use, making the netting more visible to birds or other such methods to help prevent that from happening. Condition 23, plans and permits must be submitted within 12 months of the conditional use permit for parking lot updates and landscaping. This is a condition that is carried over from their prior... Or their existing conditional use permit to make modifications and updates to the landscaping throughout the property as well as the parking lot. You'll see in the documents that there is a letter from Cristo Rey asking for some relief from that. That is for the city council to grant a longer extension for that. And that is some of the conditions that I wanted to point out. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners have any questions for city staff? Mr. Haynes.
I do.
I do.
Mr. Haynes, go ahead.
Okay.
You'll be next.
I just have a question regarding item number 21, regarding the netting.
Yes.
So are we allowing netting at the golf facility?
Yes, so the golf facility had a condition similar to this to look into measures to prevent birds from flying into it.
But did we require them to lower it?
Yes, there is language to say that lowering it is one of those methods that could be employed.
Okay, so if they can find other methods using their supplier or their netting system, they're not gonna be required to lower it?
No, that is just one of the options that we mentioned.
I still want that to be a requirement, 'cause I feel like that's burdensome to me.
Yep, just one of the many options that they could employ to prevent birds from flying into it.
Okay.
Commissioner Griffin?
My question is for Noel. Some time ago, several months ago, we discussed the property where Cristo Rey is behind there. There's a three, four-story garbage dump. What started out to be only landscaping is everything else now, and I don't think that's safe for the children. I don't know what's going on there. I called the EPA. They point their fingers at everybody else. And they said the city and the county has to do something about that garbage dump. There's semis on the roof. I mean, it's terrible. She heard me.
Multiple... They're asking for the public record, not for me. Many city departments are aware of the issue there, that however, isn't an issue for this approval, so it's not something that we can talk about in detail, however, if you'd like to discuss it.
We need to work on it, for sure.
Several city departments are aware of the concerns there and are...
I mean, they deserve it. This is an excellent institution, and they deserve to have healthy conditions for their students.
I agree that the student's safety is absolutely imperative. No argument.
Anything else? Anybody have anything else?
Chairman?
Yes.
Are we gonna discuss their... The Cristo Rey's... Are we going to...
Please take it, Mike.
Are we gonna discuss Cristo Rey's comments and remarks to these conditions at this point?
We can ask them.
Okay.
Great, thank you. So I prepared a second packet that's part of your... The packet that I gave you, but it essentially takes the staff's report with the 20... 27 conditions. And as I said before, we really only have concerns about six out of the 27. So if I could just jump in, the pages behind that have some exhibits that I can refer to. But the first one is number 14. The landscaping shall be increased to screen field from neighbors. All landscaping must be kept well-maintained. We really don't have that big of a problem with this. The only question is, what do we... What's necessarily... Screening is vague, and, you know, it backs up onto nothing, on three sides and to the school on the fourth side. So we've got three trees that we were able to keep, three large maples that are between the field and the strip mall to the south that's on Belvedere. But, you know, if you look at the photo here that's for 14 and 17, beyond the ComEd corridor, when you get to these businesses over here, they have a fence along the back there, both of them. I think it's an eight-foot fence that's there and solid. So it's a... I'm just not sure what we need to screen, and I don't know how we would screen the giant mountain behind us. I don't know how we could do anything with that.
Can we ask city staff why there's a need to screen the field? I think you'd wanna watch those kids running around playing soccer.
So this is a normal condition that we apply to many uses of having privacy screening. You'll probably have remembered seeing those in previous conditional use permits as one of the conditions is to have screening. And then something to remember is that this conditional use permit is for this specific property, and the adjacent properties, no matter their looks, are not necessarily affecting how the landscaping should look on this property. So that is just something to keep things looking nice, to keep things looking... To keep... Apologies. To prevent visibility from different buildings. And then to match with our tree preservation and landscaping ordinance, which is referenced in those conditions.
I could understand the landscaping part, but the screening part, this...
Which is a part of the tree preservation and landscape ordinance, is screening as a part of the ordinance.
Talking about screening with landscaping?
Yes. Yes, so landscape screening, so having bushes, shrubs, trees, things like that.
Okay. Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
Our other concern with screening is just, you know, security of our students. We don't want hiding places, so... But anyway, then if we go to number 17, no nighttime events not directly related to school sanctioned events will be permitted at the facility during the evening hours. This includes, but is not limited to concerts, festivals, circuses, and carnivals typically held by third-party vendors. All necessary permits shall be obtained for any event. So the only thing I'm concerned about is, you know, we have a record already of reaching out into the community and hosting different things. I mentioned the symphony. We wanna use the resources that we have in hand if something comes up. So, you know, we wouldn't be allowing somebody to come in here to make money off of us, but we would invite... We could possibly invite other nonprofits to allow us to host an event for them. But that may be moot with 17, but that was just the only concern we had was, you know, could... I don't know what the reason is for that condition in other places. I assumed it's because it's so close to residences, but I don't know.
Excuse me. So you're saying that you would be okay with this if it said, "No nighttime events not directly related to school sanctioned events will be permitted at the facility during evening hours. All necessary permits will be obtained for any event"?
Yeah, I guess what I would say is a school-sanctioned event or if the school could host another nonprofit's sanctioned event.
Which is basically a school sanctioned event.
A sanctioned event. Then if that's the way you interpret it, then I'm fine. Yeah, okay.
I mean, so we're just taking out the limitation that says this includes. If we took that sentence out, that would be sufficient in your mind? If we took out this includes, but is not limited to concerts, which is kind of big anyway because we're seeing certain things, but not others?
If I can just clarify, anything that the school is inviting in that they're helping coordinate is a school sanctioned event. If they're inviting another nonprofit in, that is a school sanctioned event. A third-party promoter is when you're renting out the space for somebody to do their own thing, and you're relieving yourself of responsibility for it. Carnivals and circuses and things are specifically addressed in the zoning code. So I believe that what Cristo Rey is asking for is included in what this condition states. And we can clarify it more for the ordinance if we need to, but I think the way that the city interprets that language covers what the school is asking for.
Noel, before you go away.
Yes.
So when I sat on the PTO for my children's school, which is...
I'm sorry, can you start over again?
I was on the PTO for my children's school. We hosted, as a school, a circus came and was on the school property. It was a fun... It was a fundraiser for the PTO, but it was a third-party vendor that came in and did this event for a fundraiser for the school. Are you saying that that would be something that would not be allowed?
So there are rules around carnivals and circuses and things that have changed. I'm not an expert on those, but there is a special event approval process that would vet whether or not those things were allowable. So I can't right this moment, say exactly what that city code says.
So, so we could in fact take this includes that sentence out, and it would still be covered, those, those events would still be covered under this condition if we removed the specific statement there. But based on what you just said, right? If, if we took out this includes, but it's not limited to?
What I would ask is that we leave it for now and let legal work on it for the ordinance that would go to city council, and we can run the draft ordinance past the school and they can run it past their legal counsel. Because we do want to have third-party promoter language in there, and that's important for the city, because we have issues with third-party promotion things and property owners saying, oh, well, that's them, that's not me, I just let them use my facility. Not that I'm suggesting the school would, but it's something that we're trying to enforce across the board.
All right.
Yes, I think, I think we're okay with that. The bird, number twenty-one, the bird issue, you know, similar to the, to the driving range. We, we have a letter in here in this packet from, from the vendor saying that they've been selling this for twenty-five years and haven't had issues with birds. But if, if issues came up, obviously we would want to take steps. I mean, the first people that would be upset would be our students, so we would want to take steps to avoid bird strikes, so.
They say they have not had issues with birds?
Yeah, there's a, here, I'll read it to you. There's a copy of an email that the owner of Keeper Goals sent us, and he says, "We have been manufacturing net systems for athletic fields for over twenty-five years. We have not seen or heard of birds flying, bird flight being affected by the net system. We have not been told of any injured birds from the net system." Should I proceed?
Please.
Number, number twenty-two is saying that if we, if we have plans for a future storage shed off, off to the side of the field, within the confines of the field, but, but off of the turf, and it says that it must, must match materials and style of the concession building. And I just wanted to clarify that, I put some pictures in here of the shed, the type of shed that we're looking at is a, is a prefabricated tool shed that you would, you would see available, and it, it, it will, you know, the, if you saw the rendering of the concession stand, it's, for us to create a CMU, you know, brick storage shed just seems unnecessary. Yeah, the concession building alone, I mean, I, I don't know if you're familiar with construction costs right now, but that, that little teeny thousand-square-foot building with bathrooms and a, and a room to, to sell a pop is, is, right now, they're quoting us over six hundred thousand dollars to build that little thing. So that's why we're going with something easy and prefab to store the, you know, you have to take care of the turf field, you have to rake it and, and run stuff over it to keep it fresh, so. Then, that really leaves us with the, with the last two, which are, are affecting not just the field, but go back over to our existing property that, that we have, including the, the Bell Lane Motel. And as I mentioned before, we purchased the Bell Lane Motel in order to try to get a traffic signal. We started a process of getting a traffic signal and submitting a, had a traffic study done and submitting it to IDOT. Unfortunately, when we did the traffic study, it was before COVID, we went to, we went to submit it, and they said that it was stale. So we've recommissioned another traffic study that was just finished, it's been submitted to IDOT, but Gaywald Hamilton Associates is the traffic study consultants we're using. They're, they're well-known in, in Lake County, but they've told us that this is a two-year, a two-year project to get, to get any kind of resolution with IDOT, that it moves that slowly. And so we're concerned about a couple of things on twenty-four and twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty...
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
I'm losing my numbers, I'm sorry. Twenty-three, with twenty-three. We can't, we couldn't possibly come up with plans and a permit, go to permit for any kind of landscaping when, if we have a, a light, that creates all kinds of different opportunities for us as far as the frontage with Belvedere Road, which we may be able to create outlots and, and have, have them leased or, or sold as, for, for businesses along that way. Or if, if we don't get the light, clearly it means that those lots are not worth very much to the school, and so we would have a different landscaping plan for that. And, and if you recall the, you can see the pictures in there, but our, our parking lot is the old Kmart parking lot, and it's, I think it's close to seven acres. And to, to go in and try to landscape seven acres is, it's, it's going to be very, very costly. We want to do it, but we need more time. We want to, we want to resolve the traffic issue, then develop plans that fit whether we have it or not, and, and then start embarking on, on renovating that parking lot.
What timeframe would you want, twenty-four months or more?
Well, twenty-four months would let us know whether we have a signal or not, and then we'd have to go into the planning stages to develop a master plan for the parking lot, and then we have to fundraise, because it's going to be very, very expensive. So it would be, it would have to be, it'd have to be at least four years.
And Commissioners, if I may. So the letter that you have in your packets from Cristo Rey is kind of addressed to the council, so we would ask that the language regarding the landscaping be kept and allow for the city council to make that relief. The kind of purview of the planning and zoning, we allow for twenty-four months to kind of start implementing these landscaping, and if we need a further extension from that, that is when we'll call in city council to do that. So that is what that letter is for, is to, to allow city council to kind of ask, allow for or approve that further extension. But we do ask that that language be kept in. Cristo Rey has been receptive to doing incremental improvements and some landscaping around the building, but not to the full scale that the tree preservation and landscape ordinance would require. And then in addition to the condition twenty-two that we talked about, the future storage, staff would be okay with removing that language. And then condition twenty-one, we would ask that that remain in order to be preventative rather than reactive to any instances of birds.
And so what, what timeframe are you okay with increasing it to twenty-four? I'm asking you, staff.
Yes, yes, so we, the planning and zoning, when we have these landscaping conditions in a conditional use permit, we allow for twenty-four months. So that gives a business owner, homeowner, what may, the ability to slowly work on this, to phase it out, to work through twenty-four months to, to start this process, to have permits in. So the process doesn't have to be completely done in twenty-four months, they just have to have permits in showing that they are working towards this.
And then the, if they need an extension, they need to go to the city council rather than planning and zoning to ask for that extension?
So for the approval of this conditional use, the extension would be kind of a part of that, to have that, this letter asking for that relief to allow that, it would probably be tied to the IDOT approval of a, of a light.
Stoplight, yeah.
Yeah, so that when we know if we need to do, so, to, to subdivide these lots and do the outlaw lots, so it would be tied to the IDOT approval.
Okay. And where is it officially tied to the IDOT approval? It's not stated in here.
No, that, it would, that language would be changed in the ordinance. That would be adopted by city council.
And the ordinance is a new ordinance specific to the stoplight and Cristo Rey and the entrance there?
So the, there would be an ordinance for this conditional use permit. So they have an existing conditional use permit, which is its own ordinance, and they are amending that conditional use. So there would be a new ordinance for this additional parcels and additional use.
Okay.
So it'd be in that new ordinance that...
Is every conditional use permit we give put into an ordinance?
Yes.
Oh, my not, my lack of knowledge, thank you.
All right, anybody else have any questions? Comments?
Okay, that's it, thank you.
I guess at this point, we are looking for a motion, we're going to take them one at a time. Five D zoning calendar twenty-seven fourteen variance for fence sports net height at thirty-one oh six Belvedere Road.
I'll try. I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Recommend approval?
We recommend approval for zoning calendar number twenty-seven fourteen for a variance for the fence height maximum, for the variance on a maximum fence height for a sports net at Cristo Rey.
We have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bill. Any further discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Haynes?
Yes.
Grimes? Griffin? Bill? Anderson?
Yes.
Howl? Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Item five E zoning calendar twenty-seven fifteen is a request for an amendment to existing conditional use permit for a private educational institution to add a sports facility at thirty-one oh six Belvedere Road. Do we have a motion?
I'll try again. I make a motion that we approve or recommend.
Approval?
Recommend for approval, zoning calendar item number twenty-seven fifteen, the amendment to conditional use permit for private educational institution to add a sports facility at Cristo Rey Martin St. College Prep with the conditions listed by items number one through twenty-seven in from the staff, with the changes being that item fourteen is removed, item seventeen will stay, item twenty-two will be removed, item twenty-three, the time period will be changed to twenty-four months, and there is no timeframe listed on item twenty-four, but I believe that also we would change to twenty-four months.
That is your motion.
Okay, bye.
Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Rivera. You're seconding that motion subject to all of the changes that Commissioner Haynes is...
That's correct.
...inserting.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on that motion? Like a roll call vote, please?
Haynes?
Yes.
Grimes? Griffin? Bill? Anderson?
Yes.
Howl? Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Your plan?
And if anybody ever wants to come visit, we welcome visitors, thank you.
Next step is Monday, July third, Community Development Committee, approximately five PM in this chamber, the final time will be set to Friday before. July third. Okay, let's see, after ten, we're going to get out of here before midnight, this is not going to be another marathon, it already is.
Ten-thirty, ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty, we're gonna have, okay. The next, these are three different items, but they are all part of the same project. It's item five F zoning calendar number twenty-seven sixteen, request for a variance for requirements to provide vegetative screening and berry cables at twenty-eighty-two North Buttrick Street. Five G zoning calendar number twenty-seven seventeen, variance from fence requirements for ornamental style and prohibition of barbed wire at twenty-eighty-two North Buttrick Street. And five H zoning calendar twenty-seven eighteen, conditional use permit for a solar photovoltaic field at twenty-eighty-two North Buttrick Street. And we have two presenters. Yes, please.
You want to do it?
Sure.
I would like to swear you both in, please. Would you raise your right hand?
I'm an attorney.
I'm gonna swear you in.
I'm an attorney, so.
You're an attorney, I'd still like to swear you in, please.
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give, this is not a court of law. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and other than the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed.
Tried to make this fast for you tonight, I know you're, it's after ten o'clock. The Yeoman Solar Project has been before this group before, and we received a conditional use permit in twenty-twenty, which has expired. Construction could not begin within the year of that CUP.
Did you state your name?
Lori Cuervo. I am the Director of Project Management for BQ Energy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The project that we are developing and going to construct on the Yeoman Creek landfill is an EPA Superfund site. The project is, construction is constrained by the consent decree from the EPA for the remediation activities on that site. As you correctly stated, we are looking for the conditional use permit with two variants for this project. A little bit of background of who BQ Energy is, we are a solar development company that builds only on brown fills and landfills, so retired industrial sites or coal mines or other type of land that cannot be used for other activities, so we beneficially reuse the land. We are a company who's one of the first to develop landfill, landfill solar projects, specifically in the Northeast. We helped write some of the code in Massachusetts. We're developing this project. We've built the biggest one in solar project on landfill in the United States to date, and we're now building one on two-hundred-and-fifty acres in Columbus, Ohio, and two-hundred-and-fifty acres in Houston, Texas, both in city limits. This site that we are building on at Yeoman Creek landfill is owned by the Waukegan Community Unit School District number sixty, they're the landowner. It's managed by the Yeoman Creek Remediation Group, we often refer to them just as YCRG. The landfill was remediated and subject to ongoing maintenance in coordination with the EPA and the Illinois EPA, and it's also managed under the Circle of Consent Decree. We have a limited ground-surface lease on the property, where we are allowed to construct our project on top of the property and are not allowed to dig into the dirt more than twelve inches per the constructs of our lease. We also purchase land directly south of the Yeoman Creek landfill that we own now, where we are interconnecting our project to the Commonwealth Edison power lines to get our power out of our project and onto the utility grid. We have an easement with ComEd on that project. Page five in the presentation shows the site plan as it is laid out right now. Might be hard to see, but all those little blue squares are solar panels, the red circles are actually the gas well vents that the YCRG group monitor with the EPA on that project currently. So our construction will not interfere with anything that they have to do for remediation and operation of that project. The next slide shows generically what a project of ours looks like on another landfill on which we built, and you can just see the, you know, what the lines of the solar panels and stuff look like there. Currently, we're operating under a timeframe for development. We were delayed for a few years going through the state to get our enterprise zone done, which actually didn't get done in two and a half years by no fault of us, where there were some bureaucratic hiccups, and the new law went into effect for HIB designation. We applied earlier this year, and it took less than two months to get that approved, and we got that in May, so we now have our enterprise zone for our sales tax abatement. We've already selected a company to build the project, and we'll be signing up the contract with them before September. We are completing our site engineering and design, we're going to start procuring our equipment, we need to get our wetland, our permitting through this CUP. We also have a wetlands permit we're going to be getting, because one pole that we have with our power line on it will be in a wetland, but just one pole, we're not constructing in a wetland otherwise. We're looking to start construction by next summer and finish up by the end of twenty-twenty-four and be putting power out onto the grid. Flip my page here. Benefits to the community. Benefits to the community. The school district has, owns that property, but it's not suitable for any other use. And this will provide the school district with about seventy thousand dollars a year for the life of the project in rent to the school. Property taxes would also be increased over the current landfill site use, which is essentially nothing there now. And we will have about twenty to thirty jobs created during construction. I would also add that we have a contract for power sales for this project with the Illinois Power Authority, where sixty percent of our end-use customers have to be low and middle-income subscribers. It's a community solar project. Under that contract, those low and middle-income subscribers would get fifty percent off the service portion of their electric bills. There, this is one of only two projects in Illinois that does that for solar projects. The rest of them have, that have been passed in the state, have lower returns for their customers. Construction on the landfill, per our lease, as I mentioned earlier, we're not allowed to dig underground more than twelve inches. They want to make sure that the cap that is on that landfill is not disturbed. So it really limits what type of construction we will do, and we'll talk later about the reasoning for one of our variances that we're requesting. We have to have low-pressure construction equipment on there to protect the cap, so we don't make, you know, a lot of pressure on there. We use truck vehicles to deliver concrete. There are setbacks under the Circle of Remedy for the gas vents. Those red dots you saw in that picture, how far away we have to stay from those. We are not allowed to install equipment or vegetation on the site. It would impact the cap or violate our lease. And then, once the project is operational, it would be just regular utility-type trucks that would go out to do whatever kind of maintenance would be done. So there's nothing heavy-loaded that's going to be on the, on the cap. We have decommissioning requirements, that when the project is finished, it covers the restoration of the project site. We would have to remove all the above-ground structures, regrade if necessary. We would have to restore any material or topsoil that wouldn't be consistent with the surrounding area. And we would have to reseed the vegetation on the cap to prevent soil erosion. Decommissioning wouldn't start until after the operations period is over. Right now, the lease is for twenty-five years. We've asked for two variances. The one is for the fence. The current fence that is there now is prescribed by the EPA Consent Decree and the Circle of Remedy. It orders that the fence has to be at least six feet tall with one feet of barbed wire. It has to surround the entire area of the landfill with a five-foot buffer to the landfill itself. That fence has been there since nineteen ninety, and the EPA inspects it every, they have five-year inspection periods. The last one was in twenty-twenty-two, and they inspect that fence as well to make sure that it's living up to their consent decree. And then, we also provided in our application a letter from the YCRG management company telling us that we are not to make any changes to that fence, because they maintain it, again, to comply with the EPA consent order. And slide twelve actually shows a rendering of what that fence currently looks like that was approved by the United States EPA. Slide thirteen talks about the second variance we're asking for, for the burying the cables and the vegetative screening. Burying cables is going to be difficult when we're not allowed to dig more than twelve inches into the dirt to protect the cap. And these two pictures show you a rendering of what our above-ground cable system looks like for just about every landfill project where we're not allowed to dig into the dirt, looks like. It's low to the ground. It's lower than the panels. It generally runs along the concrete ballasts that hold the panels up. And the other thing is, for a number of reasons, we don't want to build, put vegetation and trees and stuff onto the cap. One, we can't put anything onto it that's going to grow down into the cap layer and breach that cap. Right now, the fence that's around the perimeter is right up to the street, so there's really no spacing between the fence and the outside of the fence to, to plant trees. And obviously, with solar projects, you don't want great big trees shadowing the sun out from solar panels. But that's just a, that's a secondary issue. And Ben, I think you're going to talk about the permit factors.
Yes, thanks. Ben Jacoby, I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant here. Appreciate you hosting us this late at night. You know, I'm the lawyer, so I'm asked to talk about the legal factors and standards that this board is to apply. I first want to take care of a bit of housekeeping. We have one exhibit, which is the application with its attachments, A through J, the applications for conditional use, in the two variance applications. We'll formally request that those be placed in the record. All of these factors are explained in some detail in the applications themselves. We provide fairly thorough narratives on how we meet each one of the conditional use factors and the variance factors for each variance. These next few slides bullet point essentially what is in the application. You know, given the hour, I don't have to walk through each one of those. I can just sort of refer you back to the applications that are in the record, and you can rely on what we've written there. I'm happy to take questions on those factors. Or if you'd like me to walk through them, I will. It'll take a few minutes to do so. Before I, before I present that option to the board, though, I'll note a couple of things just as you consider how this impacts the, the public health, safety, and general welfare of your community. It is a passive use. There's no noxious odors or pollutants or sounds that come from the property. It transforms, again, the landfill from essentially an unusable property to a productive use. The tax increases significant. Tax, solar energy generating facilities are taxed at, at a fair market, they're assessed at a fair market value of two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars per megawatt. And if a, if a nine-megawatt facility is built, as, as is being requested, then that's almost two million dollars of fair market assessed value for this property, which right now is zero, as a school district property. And also, the subscriber service that Lori mentioned a moment ago brings significant benefits to residents here in town that subscribe and get, you know, approximately fifty percent off of their supply charge, which is, which is incredible, really, more than nearly any other project in the, in the state. Again, there, the, the, the project doesn't impact property values around. There's been a lot of studies on how solar projects impact property values of neighboring adjacent properties, and there is no impact, and I can cite studies to that if you would like. It's bounded by the fence, so there's no, so there's no ingress from potential vandals. It's close to interconnection, which is good for the project and keeps the, keeps too many lines from being constructed. It's consistent, most importantly, with the EPA's consent order of nineteen eighty-nine, the UAO later, and the consent decree under by the court. And we have exhibits in our binder that have the relevant sections of those in there. If you, if you were to look, you could look up exactly what is required by the court, which is very important. And this project would comply with all of that, so long as the variances are granted, which is why we're requesting them. The landfill cap won't be disturbed, very important here, obviously, so long as the variance, the variances are, again, granted. And, yeah, it brings revenue to the district, and then we've committed to a pollinator-friendly vegetative surface there to assist with the pollinators. So, again, I have a few slides here to walk through each one of the factors, but it's all set forth in your, in your applications, and it will, in large part, duplicate what I just told you, just laid out in front of the different factors. So, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I'll just refer to the application and the material in there, or I can walk through now. And I'll leave that option to you.
What is the pleasure of the commission?
I think we can read it.
We can read it in our own, yeah. And we've all looked at it.
Sure thing.
Okay.
I have, you know, I'll, they're, they're in the packets, too, that I just provided, the slides. So we go through each one of the factors, one through five for the conditional use permit. Again, that is all in the applications themselves, each one of the, each of the narrative reasonings. And then, the variance factors for each of the fencing and to variant the requirement that we plant vegetation and bury the cables. That is also explained in, in the packets and in, in the slides that I presented, factors one through seven, yeah. So that brings us to the conclusion of our presentation here. Happy to answer questions on the factors or on the facts. And I apologize, I don't, I don't testify normally, because I'm not presenting facts to the board. So I usually, I usually just present my legal argument, which is not normally a testimony, but happy to present anything under oath that the, that the board would, that the board would like.
Thank you, thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions of the presenters? Commissioner Haines?
So, first to Noel. The, well, I guess you haven't made your presentation yet, you guys, yet, so I guess I'll wait till that. I, I was not familiar with this site, so I did drive by it today. And first of all, the fencing is not great everywhere. Is that not your responsibility? That is the EPA's responsibility?
It is.
From nineteen ninety, I mean.
Yeah, it is. I'm sorry, do you want to?
I was just going to say, the construction of that fence and the way that it is, is the responsibility of being built and maintained by the EPA status. In our lease, when we actually build our facility, we're going to have to make sure that we maintain it. We just don't want to tear it down and put something else up. We will maintain what's there.
The fence, the fence is owned by the remediation group, YCRG, and the EPA comes out every five years to make sure everything's in order, including the fence. In the last five-year plan, the EPA came out and said, hey, the fence is a little damaged due to some vehicle, I think a car hit it. So you need to fix that. They did. And, you know, so the EPA monitors it, and going forward, we'll need to monitor it, too.
And when there is something that needs to be repaired, will that be your responsibility to repair it, then? I believe it is in coordination with the YCRG group. Okay, okay. And then, there is that buffer between the fence and the actual landfill at five feet. Are you allowed to do anything in that space there, or is that restricted as well? It's restricted as well, as long as, I believe, the cap goes up to the edge of the landfill, as long as it, we cannot do anything where the cap underneath the ground is located. So, when I drove by, there's a fence, then there's a, a low area, and then there's kind of a gravel or stone, and there's a higher area. Is that the cap? I, I can't tell you where they have their cap right now, unless I had their survey. I'm sure they have that lower thing for water runoff and drainage and whatever they have to do to manage their facility. But the cap is buried down below the dirt, so I don't. But not up to the fence line? I don't know if it goes to the fence or not. Okay. Unfortunately, I can't answer that question. I can get that answer for you, but. No, well, I was thinking regarding any kind of vegetation. If you had the ability to, quote, beautify the chain-link barbed-wire fence, even on the inside, it might make it more appealing in terms of, for residents and, and people who do see it, even though most people don't even know that it's there, so.
I think there's a risk that, you know, whenever you plant, yeah, the woody vegetation, the roots are uncontrollable.
Grow under, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. As far as, on your site plan, if you want to go to that. You showed the gas well vents on there in the orange dots. Now, that's not atmospheric fence. That gets a pressurized piping back to a location, central location.
No. Those are just vents for the landfill itself. They monitor the, they monitor whatever is coming out of those gas vents, yes.
So, but they, they do, can release gas from it?
Yes.
So wouldn't that make it an XP, explosion-proof area? It's methane gas.
I don't know that it's methane. I, I'm sorry, I can't answer that question. Anyways. They monitor it, and we have to maintain a diameter away from it, so that they can get their truck in to do all of their monitoring. We won't impact their EPA consent order and whatever it is that do with the monitoring of that is not our responsibility, and we will not build close enough for it to be an issue. We've already put our plans through the EPA and received an EPA comfort letter from the United States EPA, signing off on our construction techniques and where we were going to build and things like that. So the EPA has already given us what they call a comfort letter, that we won't impact their consent decree.
But has an electrical
No.
engineering group looked at it as to see the
Yes.
possibility of, because you've got an open cable system now, instead of in duct.
Well, they're not open cables. They're cables that are inside of conduit. So they're in the rubber conduit. If you look on this particular picture, you can see how they're inside of the, of the casings. And yes, we, like I said, we build these all over the United States on, on other types of landfills and stuff that have these vents, and it's, it's not an issue. It's approved by state regulators across the country.
I'm just leering, because John's Manville tells me you're doing everything right, too. So, I'm just concerned about the explosion-proof factor with that, so, thank you. If you don't know.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I just want to make a statement. I think it's a fantastic project. I mean, that land has been just sitting there vacant for, I don't know how long. It's a real blight on the community. And I'm glad you're coming and utilizing it, so.
We're looking forward to it.
In a positive way, in a sustainable way, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're excited about the project. We're ready, we're ready to get it off the ground.
Yeah, we wish it would have already been built, but that delay from the, from the state caused almost a two-year delay.
It hasn't only been vacant, but it's been a drain on the school district. The school district has been involved for many years in the legal maneuvering and bargaining and everything else. It's cost them a fortune just owning, owning that property. And if they could have given it away, they would have done it, but they couldn't. And so, here's a chance. They tried. Here's a chance. You know, they say when life hands you a lemon, you make lemonade. Well, this is what the school district was attempting to do. They're trying to turn this property, which has been a real detriment, into something positive and actually get some benefit to the community and some positive cash flow coming out of it, so.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, city. Oh, no. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak out? You, sir, either in support of or officer. Okay, speak out in support or opposition to this project. You are our sole audience.
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to swear you in, please.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and other than the truth?
Yes.
Please proceed. State your name and your affiliation to this project.
Yes. So, good evening, commissioners. My name is LaBarre Mooton, Superintendent for the School District. Good evening, audience. So, at our May second, twenty-twenty-three board meeting, the Board of Education did approve support for these two applications. You see here this evening, we're very excited, as was stated. We're anxious and ready to go. We were hopeful it would have been done by now, but we're anxious to continue to support, so it can become a reality. We do want to ensure that the remediation cap is protected, the twelve inches that was mentioned earlier with the burying, the burying of the cables variance. But the district is anxious and excited and supported of this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, now I'd like to ask city staff for their input.
Good evening, commissioners and chairman. Thank you for your time, as always. And also, thank you for the petitioners for sticking around and giving us this presentation at these late hours. So first on the agenda would be the variance for relief from planting vegetative screening and burying cables. And as the petitioner stated, they are not permitted to plant woody vegetation on the site, because it may disturb the protective layer of the landfill in violation of the US EPA consent order. Also, this applies to the burying of any cables, as they could cause ground disturbance and negatively impact the protective layers of the landfill. And with the next item, the variance for the fencing with the barbed wire, as they mentioned as well, pursuant to the US EPA consent order, a fence was installed around the site to limit site access and improve security. The consent order required that the fence be at least six feet tall with an additional one-foot section of barbed wire. So that's why it's seven feet. And our zoning ordinance only allows for up to seven feet, and that had to go to DRB. So, since it can't go to DRB, the petitioner is seeking a variance. And finally, the conditional use application. They mentioned, you know, a bunch of the background, so, as they mentioned, they applied for a conditional use permit in twenty-twenty, which was approved. But due to delays outside of their control, the plan did not go through. So they are here today to present the same thing. And when the City of Waukegan initially approved the conditional use permit, there was two conditions on this permit, which were for the barbed-wire fencing and the screening of cables. So now that they have variances for those two conditions, our only condition would be for the pollinators, which is, if you take a look, condition three, the petitioner is encouraged to utilize pollinator-friendly native landscaping to the extent possible. Invasive plant species should be removed once identified. And another condition I would like to point out is number two, which is if a ground-mounted solar system is to be placed on property designated by the US Environmental Protection Agency as a Superfund site, which this is, such systems may be exempted by a conditional use permit from ordinary mounting requirements under this section. It may instead propose alternative means to conform with EPA regulations and state and federal law in accordance with Section four point one-six dash three-nine of the Waukegan Zoning Ordinance. And those alternative means to And those alternative means to meet the, to conform were the variances that were presented by the petitioners. And that pretty much concludes my staff report. Any questions from the commissioners?
Commissioners, have any questions for city staff? Okay, we didn't have any letters, did we?
No, I meant, oh, sorry, I forgot to mention. There was no letters of support or objection for this project.
Okay, I have one. This was actually a text that I received from Mr. Rick Riddle, school board member. He says, hi, Mike. Can't make the hearing tonight on the fence variance for solar field, but would support having the company replace some, if not all of it, especially along Sunset Avenue, and move it back from sidewalk, also by the apartments. Thanks. We know why it can't be moved. But I do agree with possibly repairing it, kind of shabby in places. Okay.
One housekeeping I forgot to ask to have my PowerPoint entered into evidence as well, so the applications and the attachments there, and then the PowerPoint as Exhibit Two, just so that that's in the record. Yeah, and then on the fence, you know, we, we can't replace it because we can't dig. And that fence has been, as I, as we showed that diagram before, that diagram is from the consent order from 1989. That is, that is the required fencing. So that, that's what we have to stick with. But yeah, the maintenance is, is of course something that, that we'll commit to.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this point, then, we need to take these.
Are they okay with these conditions?
These are three, okay. Go ahead and ask your question, please.
Have you read the conditions that, the four conditions?
Yes.
Actually, it's one, two, three, three, and four, so it's five conditions.
Five, you're spot.
That zoning department does not know how to count.
It's our computers, I swear.
And you're, those are acceptable to you?
Step up, please, to the.
Those are acceptable conditions to you, to your.
Yes, they're acceptable conditions, all five.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, now, we have three different items for this project, and we're going to handle this, we're going to vote on them separately. First is item 5F, zoning calendar number 2716, request for variance from requirements to provide vegetative, vegetative screening and bury cables at 2082 North Butrick Street. We know why they can't do that. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion to recommend approval?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any further discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Haynes?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Item 5G, zoning calendar number 2717. This is a request for a variance from fence requirements for ornamental style and prohibition of barbed wire at 2082 North Butrick Street. Do we have a motion?
I saw move to recommend approval.
Okay, motion from Commissioner Rivera to recommend approval, zoning calendar 2717. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any further discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Haynes?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. And item 5H, zoning calendar number 2718, a request for a conditional use permit for a solar photovoltaic field at 2082 North Butrick Street. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner How to recommend approval?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any further discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Haynes?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, good luck with your project. I'm happy to see that it's moving along. Next step is Community Development Committee, Monday, July 3rd, approximately 5:00 PM at this, in this chamber in the title town except the Friday before. It means you can't go away for the Fourth of July.
Somebody else is covering for that one.
Monday.
Thank you.
All right, okay, and you know, I, there were some letters I did not read for zoning calendar 2714, and you know, it was already.
It passed.
But I, I just want to read them into the record, okay? I, I.
There's like eight of them, though, aren't there?
No, I just have three of them here.
No.
These are all from DN Pinella at 104 Forest View Drive. Wait a minute, is this all the same item? They're all for item 2714. So it's really, this is just a copy of the same letter. It's one letter. And I just wanted to read that info. She supports item 2714, zoning calendar 2714. Okay. Anyway, that is it. New business. Is there any other new business we need to discuss? Please say no.
Adjourn us.
Okay, item six, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved, we adjourn this meeting.
I second.
Motion by Commissioner Haynes, second by Commissioner Earl. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Teddy, thanks for sticking with us.